Yeah, I'm wondering we'd like to call the Carson City Planning Commission to order. The date today is April 30th, 2025, I hope. You call a roll, please?
Yes. Chair Boarders?
Present.
Vice Chair Cron?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner DeChristopher? Commissioner Peterson? Commissioner Preston? Commissioner Pazelle?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Pazelle, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
You will join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public at this time is invited to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. There are any public comment at this time for items that are not necessarily on our agenda? All right. Hearing none. Let's move on for possible action to approve the minutes of the March 26th, 2025 meeting. They were part of your late material, and I suspect that everybody has had a had a chance to read them. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll take a motion to approve. Commissioner Brooks? There's a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Cron?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, I will be abstaining since I missed that meeting.
All right. All in favor say aye.
You know what? I can't move because I wasn't at the meeting. I apologize.
All right.
Um, Mr. Chair, Mr. Pazelle, Commissioner Pazelle, did you watch the meeting? Or just portions? Because I think if you watched the meeting, you can still participate.
Oh. Uh, I did watch the entire video, which probably marks badly against my mental health, but yes.
Then you're in a position where you can vote.
Okay.
Although you're not present at the meeting, but you reviewed the video later on.
All right. Is there any further discussion now? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Meeting items. Uh, let's see. We want to, is there a request to change the order?
Yes, if we could please take 6B first.
6B first? Are there any objections to the commissioners? All right. Item 6B, LU 2024-0450, discuss and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit with 688 square feet of living space and to allow detached accessory structures with cumulative square footage that total more than 75%, but less than 100% of the primary structure size on the property zone Mobile Home 6000, located at 2549 Airport Road, Assessor's Parcel Number APN 008-211-24.
Good evening, Heather Manzo, for the record. Uh, so the subject property is on the northeast corner of Airport and Sherman. Uh, this was a subject of a recent parcel map, maybe within the last year or so, where an acre was subdivided into two half-acre sites. Uh, so what this request is for is to, um, allow for an accessory dwelling unit on the property. However, when we started reviewing the application materials, um, I met with the applicant at the site, and it appears that there are several, um, detached accessory structures that we didn't have record of any permit for. Um, so when the applicant provided us with additional information noting the square footages, uh, the total cumulative square footage of all detached accessory structures, including the ADU, because that falls under that cumulative calculation, um, was just under 100% of the total structure square footage of the primary residence. So, uh, that square footage, just under 100%, would typically require an administrative review, which wouldn't come before the planning commission. But since we're already looking at a special use permit for the ADU, uh, we did go ahead and forward to the pla- planning commission consideration of both the cumulative square footage of all detached accessory structures and the ADU. So that's what's before you this evening. Um, so I'll stay on that slide that I had there. So, uh, when we met on the site, um, the property line wasn't really clear when we were looking at the materials that were submitted, um, in relation to where the existing structures were. Uh, as you can see on the highlighted yellow box here, that's the approximate location of the parcels. Um, so our parcel data doesn't line up exactly perfect with the pictures that it's laid over. Uh, and so I drew this yellow box based on fence location and approximate development area of the parcel. Uh, so as you can see, the white roof on one of those detached accessory structures on the east side, it goes over the property line. This is something we discovered when we were going through the application process. And so to address this, uh, we have recommended a condition of approval that number one, will require that any detached accessory structure that would require a building permit, that the applicant submit and obtain a permit for those. Um, and number two, that if, uh, I put the distances from property line based on the size of the structure, uh, the structure will be reduced and modified to make sure it meets the required setback for that size of structure in relation to that setback. So, um, with that, uh, staff is able to make all the findings that are necessary for a special use permit for all of the requests. It does, uh, account for the square footage of the ADU, as well as the cumulative square footage of all the detached accessory structures. So those are all spelled out, and the applicant, um, has worked with me throughout this whole process to make sure they understand what code requires and what they're going to need to do. So with that, we're recommending approval. I did not receive any public comment, and the applicants here to address the commission at the appropriate time.
Okay. Heather, the lot next door, the 821123. If, if we do the same thing with, uh, with that lot, is it going to go all the way to the property line that's on the picture, or is it going to be offset also?
Uh, so on the east side, you can kind of see where the shrubs in the fence line are over there, and I might be able to point with the...
I see it.
Okay. So that's where we would guesstimate the property line is located.
Okay. All right. Any questions to staff?
Just a quick question for Heather. You talk about the ancillary structures, the non-ADU structures. But yet in the conditions, recommended conditions of approval, I don't see that. Is that, is, but I find it at the very back of your staff report. So how does that work?
Condition number seven speaks to, uh, obtaining permits for all detached accessory structures that would require them. And at the very end of that would be the cumulative square footage that's allowed.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is the paragraph at the back of your, under your findings, um, reflect, are reflected in your condition number seven. Is, am I understanding you correctly?
So the last paragraph on page nine?
On page nine, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. It just, they were just worded differently, and I was just making sure that that's what, that condition seven did match what you were saying back on the findings. Okay.
Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heather, and this may be a question more appropriate for the property owners, if you don't know the answer. Is this a matter of, uh, things that were built by the current owners that were built in an unpermitted manner, or is, are they legacy structures?
That would be a question best answered by the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff?
Oh, one more, just real quick. Was there any discussion with the property owner about hours of construction?
Uh, there was not code only addresses it when we're looking at tentative maps as a tentative map condition. Um, if you feel that it would be appropriate for this project to have a similar condition for construction hours and need that to make findings, you're, you can do so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I had a quick question. Who's going to live in that dwelling?
Uh, so that's another question for, uh, the applicant. I will say that with the code update that was adopted in the beginning of December of last year, we did remove the requirement for tenancy restrictions. So, um, it's not really even a question that we ask at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
The applicant's here, and I just wanted to note we have a staff person to help translate because the applicant's primary language is not English.
Okay. Do you understand the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Would you state your name, please? Now, just press that button once, make it green.
Maria Teresa Chavez.
Thank you. You want, you had some questions? Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Were the structures that were built without permits, were those built by, by you or, or, or the current owner or by prior owners?
Um, the dwelling is a chicken coop that they, they themselves constructed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Commissioner Peterson?
So I was just curious, I don't know if it really makes much difference to us, but is that going to be a rental? Is it for family? Uh, who's going to be staying in that unit?
Herself and her husband will be living in that unit.
Have those plans been submitted to the building department? And do they have copies of that? And have they been approved? Building Department? Out of curiosity, so I went through the plans. I didn't see a furnace, and I didn't see a water heater. How are you going to provide heat and hot water in that unit?
I can address that. Um, Commissioner Peterson, so those are items that we haven't, uh, in terms of the planning process, we look at the special use permit before we finalize our review on any building permits. So once the special use permit has been issued and there's a, a letter of decision, then all of the staff members will provide a complete set of comments. So that's something that'll be reviewed with the building department review.
I see. I just wanted to make sure it was kind of a complete unit instead of like partial here and partial there, and we'll fix that later.
Yeah, it'll be required to meet building code at the time of permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
This is a question more for Heather, just, uh, you know, housekeeping type of thing. On the condition of use of, on number seven, it shows the maximum allowable is 2214. However, on page four, it says 2114.
Okay, that is a typo on my part within condition seven. So we'll fix that to equal the total square footage of, the cumulative square footage in the table.
Which, which one of these properties is going to get the additional 100 square feet? The ones that are in the table?
Give me two seconds to look through, because I noted the square footage of what is proposed. Uh, the 2214, I think, is actually the total square footage of the primary residence. So, um, let me just take a look at what I've gotten here, and I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions for the applicant?
Okay, I'll go ahead and provide that clarification now.
Go ahead.
So the primary residence square footage is 2,242 square feet. And the cumulative square footage that should also be listed in the condition is 2,114.
So there's a typo in the conditions.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Mr. Cron?
Um, yeah, just real quick, I'm, um, while, Heather, when you look at, um, finding number two, let me get to it. Once the, once the ADU is constructed, I don't see any issues with reaching the conclusion that I wouldn't have any problems, uh, finding, uh, number two is being true. Uh, but I think during the construction, especially in a, in a neighborhood setting, that unless there's some stipulation, or how does, how does the city normally handle this? I don't want to put something onerous upon them. That's just, you know, that's just onerous. But how, how would, you know, so that, you know, the applicant wouldn't be trying to build that at, you know, 12 o'clock at night?
So typically, we don't have a condition related to construction hours for a residential project that's not within a subdivision. We have had a couple instances where the commission has felt that construction hours are necessary to make findings. And so if you feel they're necessary to make the findings, then, um, as part of the motion, you can recommend the, uh, construction hours that are within the tentative map standard conditions. Um, I think it's Monday through Fridays, certain hours, and then on the weekends, a little bit shorter of a timeframe.
Yeah, the way I, the way I did, I, I did a chance, I did take it, take a moment to look it up. And what I thought that was the standard, uh, situation for, um, for standard work hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on weekdays, and from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekends. I believe that's true.
That sounds right.
Okay. So I just didn't know if the other commissioners felt that that was a concern. These are fairly large lots, these are, you know, and neighbors are reasonably distant apart from each other. But I do think that, you know, in the quiet of a neighborhood, especially during the summer when this would probably be built, you know, do, is that, is that a big enough issue to make it a condition? I just wanted to...
Is, is, you're going to have a contractor build this ADU? Or are you going to do it yourself? Okay.
Uh, a contractor's building it for them.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm not so sure that I'm overly concerned about...
Okay.
The, um, hours of construction, if, because a contractor's basically going to be working.
All right, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Commissioners, it's your pleasure. Any just further discussion?
Uh, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit LU-2024-0450, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. Oh, with that, with the correction as indicated by staff.
For condition seven.
For condition seven, thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Second by Commissioner Pazelle. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. All right. Let's go back and get back on track to 6A. LU 2025-0062, determine discussion and possible action regarding a request for a special use permit to change the western-facing display of an existing billboard to a digital display on property zone general commercial located at 800 Oak Creek, Oak Clear Creek Drive, Assayer's Parcel APN 00930209.
Thank you, Heather Ferris, for the record. This billboard is located on the south side of Highway 50 West, approximately three quarters of a mile west of its intersection with South Carson Street. The property is Zone General Commercial, and a billboard has been at this location for approximately 18 years. The SUP was last reviewed in August of 2022, at which time the planning commission approved the SUP for a five-year period expiring in 2027. The billboard currently has two stationary sign faces, one face, um, on the east and one on the west. The applicant is now seeking approval to modify, uh, the 400-square-foot sign face for the western-facing display, uh, by replacing the existing with a digital display of equal size. The eastern-facing display would remain static. So this means as you're traveling west towards Tahoe, there would be no change in the existing sign face. However, as you're traveling east from Tahoe, the display would be digital, which would allow for multiple advertisers. The billboard will remain subject to the design standards for the existing billboards as outlined in Division 4.8 of the Carson City Development Standards. The analysis is included in the staff report, uh, beginning on page three, and staff was able to make all required findings. For the purposes of this request, staff has applied the interpretation used for the digital billboard located at 3590 North Carson Street. However, um, plain, uh, Monday morning quarterback staff, uh, is not sure that we would have made the same interpretation again. That being said, we did tell the applicant that we would bring this forward utilizing the same interpretation and allow the planning commission to have a discussion. Uh, if the planning commission does not agree with the interpretation as presented in the staff report, I would ask that you please specify why you do not agree and provide direction to staff to clarify this interpretation with an amendment to Title 18. Um, again, staff is recommending approval based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report. Um, we have not received any public comment related to this item. Um, with that, I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here.
Heather, you made a comment, I think, back in your report that, that the sign is adjusted at the factory for brightness? Is that, that was the way I interpreted what we were, you were talking about?
Yeah, so there's a condition of approval...
That's number 10.
Yeah, that requires that, um, it's number 11, that at the time the, um, building permits submitted, that the applicant provide verification that the sign, from the sign contractor, that the sign's light intensity has been factory preset, not to exceed, um, the limits in, in number 10. Yeah.
I guess, I guess, and I, it probably would be a question for the, for the applicant, so I'll hold on to it. Is there any other questions for staff? Mr. Cron?
Yeah, you were saying is that you, and I'm not exactly quoting you correctly here possibly, but I'm saying is that you had said there were some, in Monday, Monday night quarterbacking, you were saying you may not have interpreted things the same way. So could you go a little further into detail for me? What were some of those, um, changes or concerns? Or, uh, maybe a different approach to your thinking?
Yeah, so in our 2023 interpretation of the code, um, staff considered the change to a digital sign face as a change in sign face and found it consistent with 4.8.3, based on, um, very similar conditions to what you have in front of you, um, including, um, requiring only static displays, no animation, moving video, et cetera. And that any, um, change in display be accomplished immediately or by means of fade or dissolve, and there has to be a minimum of four seconds between displays. And then various other, um, conditions related to the light intensity and such. These limitations staff found were consistent. We, we utilized the, um, freeway-oriented sign code to develop those conditions. Um, so they're consistent with that. And kind of in taking a step back and not having any additional, um, similar requests come forward in the last couple of years, this was the first time this has come up since the one at the north end of town. And staff kind of took a step back and, and looked at the code. And in reading the code, it says, Division 4.8.3 subsection K to, um, subsection B states that the source of light is not attached or part of the display surface. So in 2023, staff didn't interpret that to be a digital display. But in giving that a second look, um, part of the display surface would indicate possibly that it's digital.
Okay. Mr. Pazelle?
Thank you. I just want to commend staff on coming up with, with condition, um, nine and 10 as part of the, as the person who actually, um, had to operate the variance that City of Sparks did with the original Squaga sign, uh, that digital sign. We weren't prepared for any of the changing, uh, displays or anything like that. So, uh, we took a lot of heat for that, especially from drivers. So I just, I want to commend staff on coming up with those conditions.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Uh, Matt Rogers from Rogers Media Company, available to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Rogers, have you read the conditions of approval?
I have.
And are they acceptable to you?
They are.
Okay, now that's my question. I know that, that, that the brightness is set, and it can be somewhat adjustable. My, my question is, uh, in the event of a snow event, coming down that hill at night with snowflakes in the air and trying to see the highway with your headlights, that thing is going to radiate light. And is there, is there a way to mute that if, if we decide it's a snow day? Or if there's a, I don't know how you do it, but is, is that possible or is that appropriate?
Short answer is yes. So, um, it comes, it comes with a factory setting. But actually, the, these signs are just so technologically advanced now. It will adjust for brightness on an automatic basis. But we can also adjust it, even, even adjusting those lumens, uh, if that, if that is, you know, for example, like a snow day, a reflection day, or, or whatever, that can be even adjusted down within seconds. So it's...
Is it automatic from the, from the billboard?
It is.
From the software and not?
It is.
Doesn't take a person to push a button?
It does not.
Okay. Well, you, you understand my concern?
I do, absolutely. I absolutely understand your concern.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions for the applicant? Or Commissioner DeGeneres? DeChristopher.
See, there we go again. I love it. I'm going to be notorious. Yeah, the question I had actually relates back to the sign on North Carson that we had previously approved. And one of the conditions we put on it was we lengthened the amount of time. Instead of four seconds, I believe we ended up with eight seconds. And just based on the responses I've had since we put the one up on the north, people haven't felt it was a distraction. It's been favorable. So I'm just putting that out there for my fellow commissioners. Is that something we would like to consider is lengthening the time on the, excuse me, I'm thinking of the terminology here, the fade or the dissolve modes if we're doing it longer than four seconds?
I'll answer that for you. We will not do a four-second ad. That's just not, that's, yeah, that's, from a marketing perspective, that's just not, it's not a national standard. So a minimum national standard is six seconds. A mean national standard is eight seconds. So it will be somewhere between a six to eight second slot. We will not be a four-second slot. A, it's too distracting and it's just, it's not, it's not done in our world.
So if we amended this condition to six seconds, you don't have a problem?
I have no issue.
Okay, or eight seconds?
I would like to have six, just to have the flexibility, but have no problem with six.
All right. Commissioner Crone?
Yeah, I have that same concern. I'm going to drill down a little bit further on Commissioner Borders' concerns with the light coming down the hill. I guess I'm just concerned that even a factory set, and this is, I'm no expert by any means, but again, it becomes a very bright light. Now, you're going to have, obviously, the lights of the city behind it at night-
Correct.
Coming down the hill.
Yep.
But I guess I'm just concerned on just an individual project level, but also, I think, on a larger scale with the city is that this is probably going to be the start of a trend coming into the city. And how do we want to start addressing that, I think, is a bigger picture concern. But for this application, I guess I'm just really concerned. Now, in here, as I understand it, that you would be willing to, or as part of the finding or conditions, you'd be working with staff related to if you found out that 75 was too bright, you would still be able to work with staff to adjust it now. And I'm talking on a regular night, no snowstorm, no nothing. I'm just talking a regular night coming down the hill.
That's correct. Yep, we would absolutely work with staff to find the right mix to not be distracting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Preston?
Okay, I'm confused. Okay, on the 75%, if it is bright, my question is, is the sign is able to recognize the difference between snow, bright headlights, and regular daylight?
It senses ambient light. That's, that is the, that's the standard it goes off of.
So it doesn't see the snow as reflective?
It would not see snow as reflective. It would see it as ambient light. So in a situation where it got darker, but snow is reflective, that may need, that may need to be adjusted. And we would work with that on a snow day. I mean, that, we could, but we could often, I know this sounds, I'm not trying to sound, you know, robotic, but it adjusts for ambient light. There is a, there's a further setting from our manufacturer that we can plug in for weather. So if we plug snow in for weather as another layer, that could be, that could be recognized and we would look for that. And it probably would be, the first couple of months, it would probably be a little bit of trial and error, but we will get it right.
Yeah, I just have come down that hill and I felt like I was in the Millennium Falcon anyway. And then looking over there and seeing something bright, I think, would be very distracting.
Yep.
And it's really hard to adjust your eyes. The other question is for staff. There are numerous billboards along that road, but those are all on tribal land, correct? And we do not have any oversight of those other billboards.
So I believe they're on tribal land. They're in Douglas County. So we do not have oversight.
Commissioner Crone?
In the, in the, in the application packet, there is, probably, just, let me read it. It's probably just simpler. "We would operate the new sign with the same integrity and professionalism as it has been operated for the past two decades. We will be giving at no cost the City of Carson City free advertising on said sign face for the life of the permit and re-permits going forward. This would allow the city not the only opportunity, or not only the opportunity to promote, but also ability to protect. In an emergency, weather-related active shooters, for example, the city would take over all advertising on the sign for a 24-hour period." So, one, that's a very generous civic, you know, opportunity for the community to have as a communication tool. Have you discussed that with the Sheriff's Office or the Fire Department or the emergency management team?
We've not, but we have this actively deployed in other markets. And it is, it's a very easy, it's a very easy thing to deploy. We find a point of contact, whether it is the Fire Department, the sheriff, police, you know, whatever the point of contact is. We then establish, which is very easy to do, we establish a portal on whatever, whatever, whatever PC they want in their facility or mobile, if we can give it to the fire chief on his phone. And at a moment's notice, active shooter, fire, you know, any catastrophe that we sort of, you know, deem as a, as a community that is a catastrophe, they can immediately take that over without notice to us.
And you said you got this deployed in other markets-
We do.
-and you're using this. So this isn't the first, so it's not your first rodeo with this digital sign?
No, sir.
Is what you're telling me?
No, sir, not at all.
Okay.
You know, and, and, you know, we had it in Petaluma. Petaluma deployed it for the fires. It was very effective. They only had to do it for three hours, but they were reversing, you know, reversing the highway on 101 to get people out. It was very effective because it was right at the core point where the fire was coming through. So it was, it was highly effective that day. I hope we never have to use it for an active shooter. I hope we never have to use it for a fire or anything else. But it's a pretty effective tool that, you know, whomever it is that is deemed that person, you know, literally can have it on their phone and go, "Active shooter at, you know, elementary school X," you know, whatever. And it's, you know, it can run for 30 minutes, an hour, whatever it is, until that, until that, you know, until that emergency has ceased. So it's, it's a pretty effective tool. I know of no other billboard company that does this. It's something that we do as a service to the community. And it really, you know, I just think it's, I think it's what everyone should do, but-
I just thought it was a very gracious offer.
Yeah.
You know, to give that opportunity.
Let me fill in the second part of your question as well. So the City of Carson City, now, not all cities are set up to, you know, it's great to say, "Well, you're going to get some free advertising." But for a lot of cities, that's very difficult because they don't have a, they don't have a point person, you know, to handle that on staff. And they sure don't have artwork services. They don't have design services because that's not built into any budget that you're going to get. We'll provide those designs, we have a designer on staff, obviously. We provide those design services for our partners at no charge. I mean, I think we have a small sign in the City of Riverbank. They average 27 changes a month. So they really utilize it. And I mean, everything from, you know, swimming lessons to food truck mania to, you know, whatever it is. And it's very effective. We don't mind doing it because it's great. And there's usually not a point person or a design person on staff to handle those. You know, you just don't, you don't build anybody for that at that speed. And the cool part about it is we library all those images so that in the future, you can just change a date and it's like, okay, you know, the Rail Festival is on this date this year. So it's really effective. We will run, we're going to, we will run a minimum, a minimum of 500 ads per day for the City of Carson City. So it's a pretty healthy schedule of free advertising. And it doesn't, and the great part about it is, it doesn't have to be for all one thing. You can have as many different designs in your slot as you want to. So as different civic organizations want to do that, you can, you can run them simultaneously, which is kind of nice.
Right. Mr. Preston? I'm sorry, you didn't-
No, I was just going to have a follow-up question to staff. With, with the findings, my biggest finding, and the applicant has done a great job of addressing my concerns, which is finding two, having to do with the, let me get there, finding two. Yeah, talks about noise vibration in the lights. One of the other things that we've done with other billboards is that we've asked them to shut down lights from like 12 to 5:00 or something at night. Is, and I don't know where the commission's going to land on this, but when you start dealing with other billboards in town, we have taken the position that between those hours, that we have asked them to shut their billboard lights down. Your thoughts?
My recollection on that is that those were in residential areas or near residential areas where they were potentially impacting neighborhoods. Additionally, that would mean, I think, it would mean for a digital sign that the sign would go dark for those times. So nothing would actually be displayed on it.
Right, that would be my question. And I'm not saying I'm necessarily advocating that. It's just that I'm trying to, just want to be as consistent as we can with the billboards we have in town.
Right, so I think this particular sign currently, it has downward-directed lights and there's no time limitation currently on those lights.
Thank you.
I'll address that for you if you like.
Yes.
So currently, we are, our lights do shut off at midnight, just so you know. It's a, it's a pretty accepted practice in our industry that when you sell somebody a static advertising ad, a static bulletin, that the lights go till midnight. It's a very accepted national practice that you don't have to illuminate it past midnight. When you're selling digital advertising, the advertiser expects it to be on 24/7. That is a, I mean, it becomes, my job and the job of our salespeople become very difficult if we're telling somebody. And I know it seems specious to say, you know, from midnight to 5:00 because of the traffic, whatever else. But in our world, it's a 24/7 world that way. So I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful, but-
No, it's helpful. Thank you, staff as well. Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, I'm just going to come back and just ask for more, a little bit more clarification on something, is that I appreciate that you are opening it up for the community. And I am hoping, or is that Endot eliminated their sign there? They used to say, you know, "There's a wreck down at the bottom of the hill" or something like that. I'm just trying to clarify that that's not what we're going to be, you're going to be using this sign for is wreck at the bottom of the hill, that that still would be Endot's responsibility.
That is still Endot's responsibility.
Thank you.
Yeah, that we, yeah, we were not, we would not be tied into Endot. Other than them, you know, permitting, you know, on the permitting side, but that's it.
Okay. Any more questions? Public comment? We started without you today.
Denny French, Carson City, thank you, Chair. I am really opposed to this for several different reasons. It seemed to me, and I'm sure people are not surprised when I say, this is going to detrimentally, because colors have frequencies and insects and birds and such do respond to those changes of frequency as well as lights, and individuals respond to different colors. So when you run, drive through Reno and you see certain casinos having red or blue or greens on signs that are peripheral to people, that can be distracting because they're looking for a stop sign or a green sign to go. And so in this case, the viewscape is another consideration. Also, I don't think, everybody's forgotten, but we went through the fact that we weren't going to put a lot of billboards up, whether they were digital or whether they were one face or another, because you couldn't really send out people to monitor the light. You couldn't, in fact, I think Ms. Hope Sullivan advised me when I said, "Well, who's going to check to see what the brightness of those lights are?" It was a mobile park that was near and the individuals that lived there were concerned about the hours the lights are on and some others about the buzz and different situations that are sensitive people like myself will pick up on. So I'm opposed to this for the view shed issue. I'm opposed to this because of the insects and bird recognition issues. And I think the viewscape is just too tremendously wonderful. That's the biggest advisory thing and that's the biggest point for us when we have people coming into town. This is like, well, I, well, I won't say what I'd rather have there, but the main thing is that I don't think those things have been studied enough. And as always, I have more time than most of you because you've got to cover the whole agenda. I can go through and be selective on some of my studies. And for me, this just needs a broader scope. And to suggest that, "Well, we could do amber," or, no, that wasn't even mentioned, "but we could do alerts on there," well, Endot has that responsibility. And if they find that that's a good place to do such, great. Most people have phones that will alert them to those type of concerns. And I don't think we need any more distractions that way. But I really thought we were going to phase out billboards and instead they're coming back in flurry, especially the digital ones. Now, that's my opinion and I'm just about out of time, but please consider that as, hey, we just, I appreciate the goodwill type thing, but I don't think we're being sold on the downsides or at least even have those addressed in this particular presentation. So I don't know how I lucked out and got here in time for this particular deal. It seems to me you probably put something forward so an individual wouldn't have to stay the whole meeting. But thank you.
Any other comment? No? No, you can't say it from there, you have to come up here.
You can come up. Public comment, please. Thank you.
Green's right. Don't push, no. You broke it.
Okay, we're on. Do I have to state my name?
State your name.
Krista Cranston. I'm in the Carson City community.
Okay.
And I agree with a lot of what was said. Mostly for me, it's a visual thing. We chose, I grew up in Carson. We moved away and came back and looked in the Reno area. And one of the things that was really distracting for me in Reno were all the billboards. It was a turnoff and, you know, driving down the road and seeing ads for all the different things just made it feel more like a city than a town. And so Carson feels small town, it feels intimate, it feels homey. And the more billboards you put up, it's not going to feel that way. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, any other comment?
Kelly Lapierre and I represent Carson RV Park at the bottom of the hill right there. This gentleman touched on the mobile park at the bottom being affected. And I came here just for the information. And because the illuminated sign is going to be facing westward and the eastern-facing sign is not, we have absolutely no concerns. And I don't, I don't agree or support his point on that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Margaret Breeden, I've been in Carson City for 50 years. I just would say that I agree, that I don't want more, especially lighted up signs that are going to be blinking at me. I just feel it's distracting from what here, what is here that's beautiful already. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? Great. Hope, if we wanted to review this in a year to see how the lights- Hope, if, if, if we wanted to review this in a year to see how the lights working, because it's something new, is that something we can, how do we do that? There's a lot of concern about it being too bright, and how does it work, and, and how does it adjust? And, and if it is adjustable, and there's gotta be, there's gotta be a place where everybody can be pretty close to being happy, but how do, how do we, how do we get there?
Got it. And I think Heather included conditions to that effect. Before I answer that, since I had the opportunity to make my mic green, I'd like to just comment on the public comment I heard, and from having sat with this commission for as long as I have, I know this commission doesn't like billboards any more than you don't like billboards. That said, the billboards that exist in this city are allowed to remain. So this is an existing billboard that will be changing its face. And what we're doing is, there was a similar situation, what, a couple of years ago, Heather? Year ago? Two years ago? And there was an interpretation made, and we are applying the exact same interpretation today, because we have a, we have a mandate, it's legal, we're legally required to be consistent in our application of the code. And so Heather spoke to that during her presentation, so I just wanted to make sure no one thought that we were, we are giving out billboards, although this, this applicant seems very generous and very community oriented, so I don't want to sound too negative on it. But I do want to put that out there. That said, I think if we look at condition number 10, the last sentence, "The director may require the applicant to reduce the brightness permitted based upon review of the actual sign in the field for compatibility with the surrounding area." So we just had Ms. Lapierre speak about, on behalf of the Mobile Home Park, right? And she said, "I'm good with everything." Well, what if once the sign's up, she's not good with everything? Oh my gosh, I never knew it was gonna be that bright, you know, I didn't understand what 75% would mean, or, or whatever, not to pick on you, sorry. But she can call the office and say, "Can somebody please come out and see what I'm seeing? We're not waiting a year to go to the planning commission." And this, this is, uh, this condition, this sentence in particular, gives me the authority to go out there and make, use my judgment as to whether or not this is too bright. Yeah, you're right, that's really annoying. I can see what you're saying, that we, they should certainly reduce it, or something different than that. And we in fact had to do that with Charlie Kilpatrick's sign. And I was on the phone with Charlie, and it ended up, his sign was malfunctioning. And actually, what he was more concerned about was it was so bright, you couldn't read it. But anyhow, true story. But you can certainly add a condition that the planning commission like, would like to review this within a year, but I think we're gonna know a lot faster than a year whether or not we have issues. And I think, based on our experience with Kilpatrick's sign, we'll take the call, we'll go out there, we'll work with the applicant, and this gives me that authority.
Okay, well, I, I don't want, I don't want us to come and have, try and legislate it in a year.
Yeah, I think you know it better in the field. I mean, maybe you, the applicant understands it better, but I think the impacts on neighbors and on drivers and stuff, you just get a better sense when it's actually there.
Okay.
So I think we're good.
Okay. Any other comment?
One other question. When you're talking about the traveling public, and you may not know this, but, you know, everybody's been talking about, excuse me, coming down the hill pretty fast, and you do. If you have a six-second rotation, because I'm, I'm very concerned about what some of the public comments said about, you know, the, the, the look and the changes, so if you've got, if you're coming down 60, 65 miles an hour, you've got a six-second delay, or a six-second, six-second rotation of advertisements, how many, are, are we gonna be looking like the old kaleidoscopes where you just kind of click through it, and you see, and I'm really dating myself, right? But, you know, click, click through it, you know, you know, see 27 minutes, 27 advertisements, and I would have a big concern about that. I think the public has a very good point. If you see 27, you know, advertisements in the time that you're driving down the hill, yeah, I have a problem with that. So can you address that, please?
So, I know what a kaleidoscope is, so. That's, it's a very viable question. So, I would say under normals, or not normal circumstances, but different circumstances, if, and if you've driven, and you've all driven that stretch, there are three of our competitors' billboards on tribal land, which is, it actually is tribal land, in Douglas County, that precede our unit. You, because of the way that those boards are angled, which is not, again, it's not great for us, but you are really seeing those first, before you see ours as the last in that, in that stand of four. So you really don't, if, if they weren't there, I would agree with you, you're probably at 65 miles an hour, and, and a six-second turn, you're probably gonna see three ads, because you're gonna have about an 18-second viewing time from the time you could notice it. So because those signs are there, you're probably gonna see two. You know, it's gonna be between 1.5 to two ads. And it just, you know, I would love to take those down, just, you know, from a, from a, from a, from a competitive standpoint, but that's, you know, that's, I'm, I'm not God, so I can't do it. So I, I think more than likely, you're gonna see, you're gonna see one to two ads. That's why I sort of pushed back a little bit on eight seconds versus six, because you do, as, as a marketer, you want to see some movement, but not too much. And so there's a, there's a fine line with that. So I, I feel like if a driver saw, you know, more than two turns, that's really distracting. If it sees, if, if that driver, at that speed, sees one turn, it, it, I think that's pretty normal. It's like, I know it's a digital sign, but it's not revolving like a kaleidoscope. So I think, yeah, I, I think it's a very, very good question.
Would, would you then, I guess I'm just, again, you know, with adjusting of things, once it's out in the field, would you be willing to work with staff on adjusting the, the, the amount of ads going, whether it's six or eight seconds? We're gonna, we're, right now, the motion looks like we're at six seconds, like you requested, but would you be willing to work with Hope, the director, to be able to, you know, adjust that? So if for some reason you are seeing three ads in that timeframe, can we work with you on that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, we'd go to eight seconds if, if, if the director felt that, that six was too fast.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to direct my question to staff and the applicant jointly, because I'm not sure where the expertise would lie. Are, is anybody aware of any federal standards from Federal Highways, Transportation Research Board, anything like that regarding mobile bill, digital billboards, pardon me, not mobile billboards, along highways? I, I did a quick search, couldn't find anything. I'm just wondering if there was research done at the federal level on this.
So I, I can speak to that a little bit. I didn't find anything myself.
Okay.
But I believe, and the applicant knows better than I do, Endot permits these signs.
Right.
And I believe they have standards for how quickly the sign can change as well.
And this is within Endot's standards even, though it's not necessarily on Endot right-of-way, or do we know?
We, we will, it does, it currently holds an Endot permit.
Okay.
And, and then we would be adjusting that Endot permit to a digital, which is allowed under, under.
Sure.
Under their, um, there, so to answer your question specifically, there has been no federal research done, because every state is, is, every state regulates outdoor advertising in its own way. So it's up to the state to do so. Endot, I don't know if it, I don't know if their rules and regulations are research-based or not research-based. Some, some states are, some states are not. So I, I can't answer that question adequately, but they have very specific standards on what they allow, and we are subject to those Endot standards.
That's really why I asked about the federal, because typically, a lot of what comes out of FHWA and Transportation Research Board is gonna be more rigorously researched, but, uh.
Yep.
But if you're compliant with Endot and have an Endot permit, that's good enough in this environment. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? We're ready.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move to approve LU-2025-0062, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, with, with, the staff report, with changes to condition eight, going from four seconds to six seconds, and in condition 10, where it says, "The director may be required the applicant to reduce the brightness permitted as well as the timing of the advertising upon review of the actual sign in the field for compatibility with the surrounding area."
Acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There you go. Commissioner Brooks? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 6C, AB 2025-0111, discussion and possible action regarding a request for the abandonment of a portion of Monitor Peak Street, a public right-of-way totaling approximately 5,347 square feet, which is on the easternly 105 linear feet of termination of Monitor Peak Street adjacent to properties located at 239 and 207 Pilot Peak Drive, parcels number APN 00441501 and 00441402.
Good evening, for the record, Heather Manzo. So this request is located on the east side of Pilot Peak, as identified on the vicinity map here. It's located between two existing lots that have not been developed at this time, they're still owned by the developer. So what happened is, the area that is to the east, which is not, well, it's, it is labeled here, RD Lampa LLC, that is Lampa Ranch North Phase 2. So that came through a couple of years ago, I believe, by the applicant to basically refresh an expired subdivision plan. And at that time, they reorganized their lot layout, which now shows housing lots that abut this right-of-way. So this was all done through a staff review and discussion before they came in for their entitlement request. I don't remember exactly the details, but I think there was a grade change or something to that effect that really didn't facilitate a right-of-way connection into Phase 2 at this location. However, there is a street connection that is a little bit further to the south of this one, that will remain when Phase 2 is developed. So there is connectivity between the east and west without this one. So with that, the applicant has come in to request an abandonment of this area to allow for the lots to be modified along this eastern edge of this development. So what I've got is a couple of examples of what the resultant parcels would look like. So I kind of put the two lots side by side, so you can see where the abandonment area would go in terms of the lot that it would, that land would be incorporated into. It would be split centerline on Monitor Peak in this area, and that's because this was a dedicated right-of-way with the final map that we did for the subdivision. It wasn't any other land transaction. The city was not paid for this, or the city did not pay for this right-of-way, it was dedicated. And so as a part of the abandonment law, if we didn't have to pay for it, we don't get to charge for it either. And so if abandoned, this will record, and that abandonment area will be meshed into the adjacent parcels. And then with this, the major finding of fact that we need to make is that the public will not be materially injured by the request. So if this were an essential right-of-way that is serving a function, and that access would be cut off as a result of saying yes to this, that's something that would cause material injury, and it's not something that the planning commission would probably be recommending approval for. In this case, there is no connectivity based on the approved final map next door, or tentative map next door, and so staff was able to make the finding required. I did not receive any calls or public comments on this item, and the applicant is present at the appropriate time to address the commission, and staff is recommending approval of this request with some conditions. One of the main conditions that we've recommended has to do with an existing water line that was anticipated to be tied into the Phase 2 next door. So I believe it's identified in blue on the southern portion of this right-of-way. So one of the conditions would require that to be capped off at the Pilot Peak Drive, where the edge of the abandonment area would be. And then another condition, which is typical of any abandonment, is that the exhibits that are provided with the abandonment, when it goes to record, need to include the assignment or dedication of easements that are necessary for any other utility infrastructure that's in that area. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Posel?
Thank you. Heather, the, the application and your staff report reflect that three of the utilities do have facilities within the, the right-of-way. Do we know where those, and they're asking for continuation of those, those public utility easements, do we know where their facilities are, and is that gonna impact the utilization of those properties coming onto those two lots?
So the one facility that we know of is that water line that's shown on this map. The other ones are included on here, but they're not going through. However, there are easements that are required for any lot that's recorded, which is five feet on the sides and rear, and 10 feet along the street frontages. So those would need to be perpetuated on the resultant lots.
Commissioner Crone?
I guess I wanted to drill down a little more on that question, because I had the same question as Commissioner Posel, is that you, you look at the, on the, on the picture, for example, you look at, it's a five-foot PUE on the, on the back property line, on the north property line, and then on the street side, it's a 10, as I understand that, to be a 10-foot PUE. You know, you're talking about a 35-foot PUE. Is that going to eventually limit what you can do on that lot? I mean, it, why can't you go down to like even a 10-foot PUE, centerline to centerline, or is this a request from the utility folks, or is?
That's a great question, and it's actually one that I had, because when you add those up, it's 70 feet of PUE between the two lots. So I actually called the applicant surveyor who's here and can speak better to this than I can, but I think they were anticipating leaving the water line in, but I think you, we could talk to the applicant about what the 35 feet on either side of that would look like in, in their idea.
Commissioner Preston?
Hey, what I'm looking at here is, is, are we looking at taking lot 123 and 124, or is this only as an example, and making them larger? Or are we going to have a lot in the middle of it, and take pieces out of 123 and 124?
So the total abandonment area is around 5,300 square feet, which doesn't meet the minimum lot size for SF6. So what the applicant has proposed with this request is that each lot, 123 and 124, will get essentially almost half, based on the centerline of the street. So there was a resultant parcel map here is showing the abandonment area respectively going into those two lots.
Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for, Heather, for laying out this right-of-way abandonment. My name is Justin Moore. I am a professional land surveyor, and also the director of land surveying with JKAE. I am the past 2020 state president of the Nevada Association of Land Surveyors, and 2021 Nevada Surveyor of the Year. I am here this afternoon to respectfully address and refute a few of the recommended conditions of approval relating to the partial abandonment of Monitor Peak Street. First, condition one states that we shall have, that we shall be responsible for submitting all legal documents and title search materials to full complete, to fully complete the abandonment process. This condition has already been fully satisfied, and our application has been deemed to complete by Carson City. As required within this middle package, we have provided the title reports, deed documents, recorded plats, and all other materials required by the planning division to make this determination. There is no other documents to provide. This condition appears to be a duplicate requirement that has already been met. This condition appears to be a duplicate requirement that has already been met and addressed. Second, condition four states that the requirements to determine that the water main in the area of abandonment shall be removed. This condition is premature and inconsistent with standards of practice of construction. We have proactively reserved an easement within this abandonment to protect all existing utilities, including the water line. This is future, this is further detailed within the staff report under discussion item number seven. The necessary PUEs have been shown in the abandonment documents. It's also further shown on the exhibits there that these public utility easements are being Furthermore, Carson City is the only utility provider requesting removal of infrastructure as part of this abandonment, exhibiting that the removal of existing utilities prior to an abandonment is not standard practice, and we feel that this condition is not being fairly applied. Ryder Homes currently has approved plans and a permit to remove the existing water line and street improvements, which they plan on performing in the coming weeks. Third, the condition that we must update the resultant parcels to reflect retention, relocation, or elimination of public utility easements is redundant and misleading. We have already addressed the public utility easement by reserving a blanket easement over the entire abandonment area. Staff's concern about the reserved easement being larger than it typically should is true. Code requires a minimum five-foot side yard easement. However, code does not state a maximum width. It is acknowledged by Ryder Homes and myself that we are reserving a large side yard easement. However, these easements will be properly addressed and repositioned, reduced in size during a lot line adjustment, which ma'am, goes back to your comment about the size of these lots. We do plan on addressing the size of these lots, in a lot line adjustment that we plan on submitting to Carson City immediately following the recordation of this abandonment. This critical piece of the puzzle was presented to Carson City by Ryder Homes to run the lot line adjustment concurrent with the abandonment application to show how the easements and lot lines will be managed. But that proposal was rejected by Carson City staff. In short, Ryder Homes has acted in good faith, been a good partner to the city, followed all procedural requirements, and addressed utility responsibilities. These added conditions appear to be excessive and addressed in preference rather than code requirements. We respectfully ask that the commission to consider removing or modifying these conditions in light of the facts. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, then I take it as it stands right now. You do not accept the conditions of approval in their report?
Not as they are current.
Okay. How do we get in this mess?
So I'll address condition number one because that's in, under my hat. So in the standard conditions that are required as part of code, CCMC's 1802, 0460, it is the one code-required condition for all abandonments of right-of-way. So while the applicant has stated that they have completed that, and that may be entirely true, we are required to include it as a required condition of approval based on code. And I'll turn it over to Stephen to address the other two.
If I could quickly just address Heather's comment. It most likely is a common or a typical condition that Carson City applies. However, you are leaving that door completely wide open. So after we leave this meeting, next week, I can get a telephone call or an email asking me to produce documents that do not exist. And the time, the effort that goes into the research of this, we've already, we've gone through property management, we've gone through the title company, the final mapping, everything has been produced. There's nothing more that can be produced. That is a condition of the abandonment, but that has been fulfilled.
Mr. Chair.
It just seems to me that we're not ready.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Justin, I understand you've submitted the documents that are going to be necessary for recordation, and to your professional opinion, no other documents will be required. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I think to that extent, and I understand what he's saying, I understand what Heather Manzo said, because she's exactly right. It's just a codified condition. So I think you can certainly add to condition number one that is recognized that the required documents have been provided. And that, or you could even eliminate, but if they've been provided, we have them, he doesn't have to submit them again. I understand what he's saying is he doesn't want us to suddenly say we want another document because he's fulfilled his contract to his client, and that's fair, and we want to be fair.
Well, but the whole, the whole issue of the lot line adjustment and...
Well, the lot line adjustment, I'm not certain who had what conversation. I'm not sure why a lot line adjustment application couldn't come in. We wouldn't approve it, obviously, until you had taken your action, but we can certainly, you know, looking at what it will ultimately look like. But the net of it is the right-of-way is not necessary. It's a paper street right now. They changed their layout, it's, it doesn't go anywhere. We don't need the right-of-way. So the question is, okay, are we prepared to abandon this right-of-way? Can you make these findings? If the answer is yes, you just say yes. Now, the find, the condition number one, as Heather Manzo explained, the code tells us, and based on what the applications are, and you see it more with special use permits because you don't see abandonments of right-of-way that frequently. But with special use permits, we'll often, we'll have, here are what the required conditions of approval are, because the code tells us what those are. And then we'll say, here are some other conditions we think you should consider. In the case of a right-of-way abandonment, it says, hey, you better make sure prior to recordation, you get all the documents you need. What the applicant's saying to you is you have all those documents, so I don't want this open-ended condition because I already gave you all of them. And, and so I hear, I hear both, I heard the whole thing, and hopefully I'm describing it okay. And I think we can probably resolve number one by saying, to the extent these documents have been submitted, yeah, that's acceptable, or something to that effect. I don't think this is ahead of time. I think everyone agrees this road doesn't exist and can go away, it will have no function.
That is correct. Thank you, Hope, for that additional comment. And as the applicant, we would be acceptable to an amendment in the first condition stating that we have provided.
Well, but that's only one of several.
That was one of two. Yes, sure.
Yeah. Well, it still occurs to me that, I don't want to necessarily have to legislate this at the council meeting.
Well, I think in fairness, Stephen hasn't had a chance to respond on...
Okay. I'm sorry. Stephen, go ahead.
So condition four is one that speaks to the, the water mains. So the, the reason that we're requesting that condition of approval is that owning and maintaining a utility on private property is a much different enterprise than, than doing so in public right-of-way that you own. It's, it's a big headache anywhere in the city that, that we have it. We avoid it like the plague. There are times where it's necessary. So Justin already referenced that there are plans to abandon that water main, so it's not a question of whether or not the water main's going to be abandoned. It sounds like it's an issue of timing. I was not aware that there is a big push to get this abandonment recorded right-of-way before that water main was abandoned. I apologize if that message was relayed to me and I missed that, but if, if there is a reason why the abandonment can't wait for the water main to be removed, then that work could be bonded for. That'd be something that, that staff would support.
Okay. Commissioner Puzel.
Yeah, question for the applicant's representative. Did you raise these concerns with staff prior to the meeting, or is this coming out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Preston.
My question is, is if this is just on paper, and it's on paper, you have not done your underground utilities?
No, ma'am. Those do exist. The utilities do exist. There is roadway improvement there. The developer, obviously, will, these roadways have to be removed. Back to Mr. Potey's comment, the developer has a permit. He's already bonded for 150% of the work to get this removed. It is going to happen, but you just don't call up a contractor and ask them to come out there and remove a water line overnight. It takes time to get the contractor out there. Additionally, as Heather had said, the developer is working on Phase Two just to the east. So when that, when that contractor comes in, they're working on the utilities and the improvement on Phase Two. That's why the small delay right now for the water line. We're just waiting a couple of weeks for the contractor to get on site. This is already permitted, bonded, ready to go. And the reason why the abandonment now is at a critical state is because the city would not allow us to run a lot line adjustment concurrent with this abandonment. They're forcing us to do the lot line adjustment after this has been approved and recorded. That is adding months onto the development schedule, and months is ultimately money to the developer.
My question is, is a lot line adjustment is primarily, you're, you're the engineer, so you've already done the work essentially, correct? For the lot line adjustment?
No, ma'am. I'm waiting for the abandonment to get complete. I can have, just for instance, this process takes roughly 60 days for approval. I can have a lot line adjustment completed in roughly 80 hours. So I do have exhibits showing and depicting what these lots will look like after our lot line adjustment. I do have those prepared that we presented to the city when we asked to run the lot line adjustment concurrent. So I do have that, but I don't have a full application prepared. No, ma'am.
Okay. But, but my question is, 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 right now, you already require, you already filed the required documents, correct?
For the abandonment?
For the abandonment?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. That's also a condition of a boundary, of the lot line adjustment, correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, that's fine. And then, but you're talking about that the water line must be removed. I don't, and this is kind of a chicken/egg thing, but when I'm looking at this going, okay, great, if we do the abandonment, I don't see why the boundary line adjustment is making every, this being so exciting. I'm looking at this going...
I can't adjust lot lines, ma'am, that don't exist. So right now, this lot line does not exist. I can't adjust the lot line that doesn't exist.
If I could step in very quickly and just clarify process. So an abandonment requires findings to be made, a planning commission to recommend, and then the board to approve. With that, code allows for, and the conditions reflect, that there's one year maximum to get the abandonment recorded. So when we met with the applicant, what we had said is we can't process the two requests the same, under, under the same request because they have a different process. And we can't consider modifying property lines that don't exist today. So what we said is you can apply for the boundary line adjustment, which is an administrative process, and we review it, we apply conditions if they're necessary, and that can be recorded the next day if they meet all the conditions. This is a little bit of a different process, and there's a year allowed after it's been approved to record. So there's nothing to say that the applicant can't come in after the notice of decision for an abandonment has been approved and provide both documents and record, record one and then one subsequently after that. So while I, I understand, I don't understand the development timelines, I do understand where the applicant's coming from in terms of wishing that it could all be done in one, you know, process. However, we do have two different applications with two very different processes.
Okay. So the abandonment needs to go here, then it goes to the board of supervisors. That's the delay. The boundary line adjustment can be done considerably quicker, and it can be administrative, correct?
Within 30 days administratively, yes.
Okay. And so basically, the abandonment is the thing that's taking the time that is upsetting the applicant. Is that it? Okay. Well, this is real life. We're here. So the question is, I'm just wondering...
No, ma'am. You're absolutely right.
Okay.
These conditions are just adding additional time to that process that's...
Okay. You've already done the requirement of submitting the paperwork. The thing that you would be missing is taking out the road and abandoning the water line, correct?
Just the water line.
Okay. Just the water line. And, but at the same time, you can be doing the boundary line adjustment and have that ready to go once the board of supervisors gives you your okay, you get that done within 24 hours, correct?
No, ma'am. The city staff, as Heather has said, has denied our request to run these concurrent. So we can't run this until this boundary line is, she just stated now that she, I was writing some notes, that they would be acceptable if the commission approves this abandonment today, then she would be acceptable to receiving that lot line adjustment prematurely. Before tonight, the city has not been receptive to, to receiving that lot line application. And the lot line application, I do want to clarify, is not an overnight process. They take about three months to complete and record.
Ma'am, Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may. I, I think we, we switched topics before we closed on one. I just want to close. So Stephen, I think you offered on condition four that the applicant could bond for the removal of the water main. Was that correct? And Justin, would that be acceptable to you if condition four were to say, prior to recordation of the abandonment order, the applicant must demonstrate that the water main located in the area of abandonment has been removed or bonded for?
Yes, we would be acceptable to that.
Okay. So I think with some minor changes to the language, we're okay on the conditions of approval. On the lot line adjustment, I do agree with Heather that you can't adjust a lot line if you don't have a lot line, right? But, and, and clearly, there are two different processes. All of that said, it's, you know, we're fine start, looking at the application, we can start working with the applicant, and that, he has my commitment to that. The planning commission really has nothing to do with the lot line adjustment. As Heather said, it's purely administrative, and we can work through that with the applicant. So I think in terms of condition one and two, with those, the minor additional wording, which the applicant just said would satisfy him, now it's up to you all to look at the findings and determine if any other conditions are necessary.
Commissioner Puzel.
Yeah, just to refer back to my previous slide. Heather, can you answer for me, isn't it a state requirement that jurisdiction has to process applications under NRS 278 within a specified timeframe unless the applicant agrees to, to an extension of time for, to review those applications through a development agreement? So you're, you're absolutely correct with regards to you couldn't process the lot line adjustment concurrent with the abandonment because the abandonment would hold up the lot line adjustment.
That's correct. So what I remember, we had discussed several months ago when we talked about these two items, is that we can't tell anybody, no, you can't apply for something. We can just say, we can't support it, or we need a time waiver to, to put it on hold. And so that was the discussion that we had, is that we can put the second thing on hold pending the first, or we can let the first get through the process so we know we're looking... or we can let the first get through the process so we know what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cron?
Again, I just, I want, some clarification here for me. We're talking about removing or abandoning the water main line, or having it removed and/or bonded for? In the application, they talk also about, the applicant talks about, the public sidewalk and roadway improvements will be removed with the abandonment. Is that something that, because it's in the application, we don't necessarily need it as a condition? Or is that, I guess I'm just trying to, trying to find out if that's important or not? Because what's going to happen is if they're going to come in and remove the water line, they're going to rip up the street. And, you know, so the street will be all ripped up, and then they'll take the water line out. What are they going to do with the mess? Or is that even a concern of ours, I guess, from a city's perspective? Leaving, potentially leaving the sidewalk and/or broken up asphalt in place?
So you've read the sentence in the applicant's application more recently than I have. I don't know if it says that it'll be done with the abandonment. What we looked at is, do we need the sidewalks and roadways to be removed to make the finding? And the answer was no, because a lot can have that in there. It just doesn't serve any real purpose for a residential lot. With the water line, there was a recommendation because that's not something that can be within private property.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'm kind of touching on with Commissioner Cron on this, and this is for Mr. Moore and Heather as well. Is that road paved? Does Monitor pave where that water line is?
Yes, sir.
Is that line live at this moment?
The water line is live, yes.
It is live. Is there a shut-off valve on Pilot Peak Drive to turn that line off? Where does it terminate?
So this is, I can also have Mr. Potte speak to this. We have plans in place, permitted, bonded plans to remove the water line, and at the termination of the water line where the new right-of-way will be, will be a new fire hydrant.
Oh, I see. And that will be in the Pilot Peak, on the Pilot Peak Street, like on that sidewalk?
Yes, sir, right there at the Pilot Peak, Monitor Peak intersection. So right there at the termination behind the sidewalk there, we will be installing a fire hydrant.
My curiosity, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, just, once again, that is already permitted. It's not something that is, you know, we're talking about. This is already something that's permitted and bonded for.
My curiosity is, is does that line have to be removed? I mean, if you terminate it, and you've got a six-inch line, or whatever line it is down on the six feet in the ground, do you have to pull that out?
No, sir. It's the city's preference.
I'm just thinking, that's a lot of demo, especially if the line's dead.
Thank you.
I'm a nut and bolts kind of guy.
Stephen Potte, Development Engineer, for the record. If you were to close the valve in the street, leave a dead end main in there, while there's chlorine in the water, it doesn't last forever. The water being stagnant would create a contamination concern. Also, if there was ever a leak or anything back there, it would be on the city to go fix that leak. We'd be going into somebody's backyard, ripping up whatever landscaping they have, fences, et cetera.
Well, wouldn't that line be dead? I mean, after you run that line to your hydrant, there's nothing going past it.
Correct.
And then at the other end of that, that's all unimproved, correct? That's out in the dirt somewhere, out past the, out past that, the end of that street?
Yes, sir, that's all dirt right now, and within a couple of weeks, we'll have some construction crews out there working for Phase Two.
If you were to pull that cap off and drain that, or pump it into something that you can contain and get rid of it in a safe manner, that wouldn't that line be empty without chlorine or any kind of contaminant in it?
As long as the valve is functioning properly, but valves do age, they can leak. So that line could fill back up. You'd have stagnant water, potential growth of bacteria, which could then contaminate the main in the street. To avoid contamination, you're supposed to have a backflow preventer, which is an above-ground, either dual-check system or a RPA. And then also, a dead-end mains, part of the maintenance requirement is flushing those regularly. So the city does have maintenance responsibilities that we answer to the state.
Well, coming off that T-leg, that's going to go to that hydrant, wouldn't that line terminate at the hydrant? Or it wouldn't continue on down Monitor Peak, would it?
It would, it would end at the hydrant, correct?
Yeah, so if it ends at the hydrant, that means there's no more line going down Monitor Peak. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Not a live line, so we wouldn't have to worry about any backflow or contamination?
Let me, let me just make sure I'm understanding. So you're proposing installing the fire hydrant, cutting the line, and just leaving the remainder of the pipe in the backyard?
No, where I saw that pointer was that hydrant on Pilot Peak, I think roughly where that line was going down Monitor Peak on the sidewalk, right, Mr. Moore? Is that where your hydrant was going to go?
That was the original intention of the hydrant. And then now with the abandonment of this road, we will be, the developer has no problems pulling that hydrant back and putting it along Pilot Peak right away.
Gotcha. And Stephen, I don't mean to, you know, misunderstand this part of it, but I'm just thinking, if that line's dead, not going past the hydrant, you know, it's deadheaded at the hydrant, then there's, that line's not live anymore. I'm trying to save you guys from having to dig that line up in pavement. If it's an empty line and there's nothing going through it, drain it, keep it buried instead of having to tear the street up, but that's just-
Yeah, no, and absolutely, sir, and I appreciate the comment and the concern because that is a massive cost to the developer. But Rider Home has all intentions of removing the utilities in here. We just need to get the construction crews in here and remove all these improvements, remove the utilities. We're going to be adjusting these lot lines and building some beautiful homes.
That's all I have. Thanks.
So Hope, how did you rewrite condition number one?
I actually didn't write it, but it could just say something to the effect of, to the extent the documentation or documents have been provided, no, you know, additional documents are not necessary. Or, I don't, I don't know. Heather, did you write anything? No?
I'm following your line of thinking, and I feel like that works.
That work for you, Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
And condition four, if we say are bonded for?
Yes, sir.
All right, so now you accept all the conditions of approval?
Almost. If we could just discuss condition number five. And this would be in relationship to the public utility easements that the city is asking us. Well, it's not too clear. Reflect retention, relocation, or elimination. And this is not the proper document to do such. The proper documents to relocate, to resize these easements is through a deed document, which would be the lot line adjustment. A right-of-way abandonment is not the proper instrument to be sitting here and relocating and abandoning, abandoning public utility easements. What we'll do is, after the abandonment is complete and the lot line adjustment is processing, during the processing portion of the lot line adjustment, the developer will then be working at removing these utilities and other encumbrances, such as the roadway, asphalt, sidewalks, so forth. In that same process of the lot line adjustment, those lot line adjustments, I draft brand-new deeds for each of these lots because these lot lines are changing. We have to move and adjust these easements with those lot lines that are changing. And that's the proper time and the proper instrument to address these easements. An abandonment is, yeah, is just not the proper instrument.
If I may, I probably drafted more of this condition than Stephen did because I had noticed that the water line was both shown as in a 35-foot easement and was being conditioned to be removed. So I think we could clarify this to make it simpler, to require whatever you think, whatever Public Works and Justin thinks is necessary in terms of the water line easement. And then the PUE is, the reason that condition is there is because the PUE is being adjusted from where it exists today on the existing lots, up to five feet off of the center line when that abandonment records. So those easements do need to be in place when the abandonment records. We can make it simpler, though, to require the water line easement to be the 35 feet and the PUEs from the new property line, five feet.
If we do that, then you have a gap between the easements of your existing 10-foot public utility easement, and then you have a gap of just a five footer. There's no reason why you can't extend just the 25 feet, have a contiguous easement-
Wait a minute, wait a minute. The commission is not here to help you re-engineer your project. And I'm not, I'm about very frustrated. You know, this should not have gotten to us in this condition. And I don't think it's our position to try and sit here on the fly at 6:30 at night trying to do something that we don't know what we're doing about. And I would suggest that, since nothing is acceptable to the applicant, that we continue this until May and let them and staff get together and rewrite this thing.
Can I take one, can I take one shot at five before you do that?
Go ahead.
The abandonment documents shall reflect any easements as deemed necessary by the city engineer. And that way, the city engineer and the surveyor can work it through it, and you're not being put in the middle of it.
Hope, I have a question. What if on condition number five for that first sentence, you just add at the end of, consistent with the utility provider requirements and CCMC through the lot line adjustment application?
My concern is, I heard a lot from the applicant about the appropriate instrument to be using. And I'm not prepared to speak to the appropriate instrument. And I think, given this is a two-part, it's a two-parter, right? You only get one part. The second part's the abandonment. And what I was hearing the applicant say is, this should be addressed during the abandonment, not during the, I mean, during the lot line adjustment, not during the abandonment. And I understand that we need an easement for the water line as well because obviously, we want access to our water line as long as it's in there, assuming it's been, you know, dedicated to the city and so on and so forth. Now, what does that look like at the end of the day? I can't tell you. So I'm just going to suggest that we put a placeholder in there that says, you know, that prior to recordation of the abandonment, the applicant must identify and include any easements to the satisfaction of the city engineer. They get through, and hopefully, they get through before a board meeting even, so that we don't go through this again. And I apologize to you. There's a lot here, and ideally, there wouldn't be, but we are where we are.
And I would, we would agree to what Hope just said.
Okay. Having heard that, is there any further discussion? Is there any public comment?
I'll make a motion if Hope will help me with the wording. Thank you.
If you want, I'll just summarize what I think you're going to say. Is you're going to approve the, you're going to recommend to the Board of Supervisors abandonment of the public right-of-way based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report with the following modifications. Condition number one is going to be modified to add language stating that to the extent the documentation has been provided, no additional documentation will be required. Condition number four will be modified to acknowledge that the applicant may bond in lieu of physically removing the water main. And condition five will be replaced with a statement that prior to recordation, the applicant shall obtain approval from the city engineer relative to any required easements.
All right. Let's take a shot at this, shall we? I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the abandonment of the public right-of-way based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report with the following modifications. Condition number one, modified to accommodate and acknowledge that documentation has already been provided. Condition number four, modified to include that the applicant may provide a bond to meet that requirement. And condition number five, Hope, I cannot read my own writing. Tell me condition five again.
Condition five will essentially state that prior to recordation, the applicant will include any easements deemed necessary by the city engineer.
Condition five, modified to include that the applicant will include any easements required by the city engineer. Are those changes acceptable to you?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host?
Aye. I just think we, we're just not doing our job. We're sending up a mess to the Board of Supervisors. So I will not vote in favor of this.
Okay. All right, we're going to, one more of these. AB 2025-0089, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Request for the Abandonment of a Portion of South Pratt Avenue, a Public Right-of-Way Totalling Approximately 1,680 Square Feet, Which is an 8-Foot Wide by 210-Foot Long Strip of Land That Lies Along South Pratt Avenue Between East 2nd Street and East 5th Street, Adjacent to 229 South Pratt Avenue, Zero South Pratt Avenue and 221 South Pratt Avenue. Parcels Number APN 004-09229, 004-02930, and 004-02931. Heather?
Thank you, Heather Manzo, again, for the record. So this abandonment area is unique. It's the first time in my 20-plus career, year career, seeing this. So there's a series of events that took place. The original map was recorded in 1906 with a sizable right-of-way of 82 feet. In 1965, there was a board action to reduce the right-of-way width from 82 feet to 66 feet, 33 on each side of the center line. However, there was not a formal abandonment that was recorded at that time to reflect that change. After that took place in 1998, there was an additional abandonment of another eight feet that's to the west of our abandonment area that we're seeing tonight. So essentially, what we have is a sliver of land that's public right-of-way between two pieces of private property. And when we look at our parcel data, which is what's shown on the green here on the left-hand side of this slide, it looks like everything's been abandoned and it's been done properly. But in the surveyor's review of recorded documents, there was that missing piece. So they have submitted an abandonment request to take care of that eight-foot wide sliver that's in between two private pieces of land, and that's what's before you this evening. So the resultant parcel will look the same as it looks on our map server if you look at it today. However, the recorded documents will reflect the abandoned area once Planning Commission makes the recommendation and the board takes action. Staff was able to make the necessary finding on this. It didn't receive any public comments, and the applicant is here to speak at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Do we know if those houses are abandoned that are on the property?
I will let Justin speak to that, the applicant representative.
Okay.
Hi, Justin Moore, JAAE, applicant representative. Thank you, sir. Yes, these residents have actually been demoed right now. And this site is actually the future site of a Carson City Counseling Center, Public Counseling Center. So those homes that you see on the GIS have been removed already, have been demoed. And this was discovered while we were doing our construction documents.
It seemed like today they were still there. That's why I'm asking. There's two houses still there.
Then-
They look abandoned.
Yes, sir, there's nobody living there. Anything, the land, to the best of my knowledge, was vacant or is vacant. was vacant or is vacant, and nobody's living on site. There's no residents on site.
Any questions for staff? Wow, okay. Commissioner DeChristopher?
Thank you. Yeah, one of the structures that I saw there was, it appeared to be like a red rock structure that typically is a historical building, and that's the only reason I bring it up, is I didn't know if anything pertained to that. I was expecting to see just a flat lot, and so that surprised me. And I didn't know if any of the materials would prevent that from being demoed, if there's any guidelines that have to be followed.
So Heather Manzo, on staff's behalf. So to be very honest with you, all I was looking at was lot lines and what's public right-of-way versus private property. So that's not really something we evaluated with this request. When and if there is a request to demo the properties, those will need to follow whatever guidelines are necessary based on the age of the buildings.
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, in regards to the red rock, usually that's a shippo issue. So that's one of the things I'd have a little question about. The other thing that I am asking is, names confuse me. Carson City Community Counseling Center, is that a Carson City entity? Okay, so it's a private entity. Okay, just going for the clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Crone?
Mike, I noticed the city is asking for public utility easements, but in the letter from Mr. Moore, they've indicated, or on the page here, it says, "The utility companies, Nevada Energy Charter, and appropriate others, have indicated they do not have utilities within the public road proposed for abandonment and do not want an easement reservation." So is that just something, some basic city, standard city language that you have? Is that...
So it's a standard requirement for a ten-foot public utility easement along the street frontage. And so the eight-foot already abandoned area on the west side of this abandonment request has already been recorded as an easement. There's a two-foot area that would be missing if we abandoned this right-of-way. So what staff is asking for is that we complete the full ten-foot-wide PUE along the right-of-way. And actually, I think two or three o'clock today, Justin sent over the documents that will be necessary for that. So they're already planning on complying with that condition.
Any other questions for staff? These four conditions of approval?
Yes, sir. We're agreeable.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Any more questions? Is there any public comment?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the abandonment of the public right-of-way based on the findings and subject to the conditions and the approval contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There you go. Mr. Peterson seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Did I do that backwards? Oh, all right. Commissioner Pazell, I'll let you do the pledge next time, too.
That's okay.
All right.
I just got excited.
All in favor say aye. We did that? Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. PUD 2025-0066, for possible action. Discussion on possible action regarding a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors concerning an ordinance approving requested tentative planned unit development, including one amendment to the zoning map to change the use district from the property from multifamily apartment MFA to public and public regional to MFA pud, and to tentatively subdivision, and a tentative subdivision map that would create two-hundred-and-forty single-family townhome residence with a maximum lot size of nine-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet and approximately eight-point-one-seven acres of common area for the site, approximately twenty-two-point-zero-eight acres in size, located on the north and west of Morgan Mill Road. Essayer's Parcels APN 00852236, 00852238. Heather.
Good evening. Thank you once again, Heather Manzo, for the record. So this item is located off of Draco Way and to the north of Morgan Mill, directly adjacent to the west of the Plateau Development, which the first phase is showing here is being recorded. So with this request, it's essentially a zone change of the two parcels that are the subject properties, the first being one that's already zoned multifamily apartment, and the second being one that's zoned currently public regional. The reason being is it's privately held and is going to serve a couple of functions for this request. Primarily, one of them is to provide for some open space that's required as part of the PUD, the Planned Unit Development, change. So with this, we have two-hundred-and-forty dwelling units, and the applicant had presented a phasing plan that shows that each of the four phases will be able to stand alone in terms of access, utility, circulation, and things like that. So this is the phasing plan that was included as a separate attachment, because we got that a little bit after the main application was submitted. This really just display or shows that they're exceeding their thirty percent open space requirement. One of the requirements to be a planned unit development is to provide at least thirty percent of the site area in open space, and a certain amount of that needs to be programmed and landscaped. Some of it can remain natural vegetation and things to that effect. They're providing, I think it was thirty-nine percent of the site area as open space. And so this is the draft landscape plan that shows really the pedestrian circulation, where the roads will go to provide for the access to the garages to each of the units, as well as the remainder portion of the currently zoned public regional parcel, where the brown is identified as being natural vegetation to be left in place. So as part of the original Plateau project, we became aware that there's a landfill site that's located partially within this PR-zoned piece, the part that's going to remain naturally vegetated. And with that, there was an EPA-issued approval of the request noting that Plateau, where they were anticipating to develop, wasn't going to break the capsule of the landfill area. So we're kind of mirroring that same condition with this project to require that they be consistent with the approved plan that the EPA has already in place. So in terms of building elevations, they have provided several different roof lines and horizontal articulation. So I just provided a couple of examples out of the several sheets that the applicant provided that shows a change based on, so when you're driving through the subdivision, it's not going to feel like it's the same building everywhere you're going. So they'll have those changes to create that visual interest as you're going through the neighborhood. So staff has recommended conditions of approval for the project and is recommending approval. We received one public comment that was provided as part of the late material package that was related to traffic concerns. And there was a member of the public that showed up a little bit before the meeting started noting some concerns as well, and I believe those were handed out to the commissioners before the meeting. I believe those were also related to transportation concerns. So if the public commenter speaks, or when we get to that point where we're addressing public comment, we can turn that over to Stephen to address those concerns. So staff was able to make all of the necessary findings for this planned unit development and is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend an approval to the board, and the applicant is available at the appropriate time for questions. Thank you.
Okay. On condition number twenty-four, I'm sorry, wrong one, twenty-three, Stephen, explain that in real talk. A warrant analysis.
So you're probably familiar with me speaking about traffic impact studies and level of service.
Right.
It's much more typical, as you see, it's letter grades, A, B, C, D, E, F, and that corresponds to amount of time that you're waiting at an intersection. If an intersection is failing, depending on the situation, the appropriate way to mitigate it might be a traffic signal. But just because an intersection's failing doesn't mean you can just automatically install a traffic signal. It actually has to meet what are called warrants.
Excuse me?
This is from the MUTCD, which I'm drawing a blank on what that stands for, Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So that's what gives us that analysis and what it looks like. So it's an analysis to say, okay, have we met that threshold to say it's appropriate to install the traffic signal?
And who does that? Does the applicant do that, or does the city do that?
Yes, the applicant would hire a traffic engineer to do that analysis.
Okay. The other question I have, and I talked to Heather about it before, I think, is the area that's going to be pristine, this whole project is in a wooey. And if we're going to keep that as a natural area with natural habitat, I'm concerned about how we make sure that that becomes, doesn't become a fire trap and is maintained properly. And Heather suggested that maybe that we, the developer should provide a vegetation management plan for that area. And that's strictly the area that's the brown spot there, that's part of that landfill that they can't do anything with, and they're going to use it as open space, which I think is fine. I think the idea of a pud out there is fine. But I think we need to recognize the fact that if that goes untended over a series of years, it becomes a real tinderbox, and it's right then going to be in the middle of a housing development. We've got townhouses on the inside, and we've got single-family dwellings on the outside. And I would just like for the commission to think about that when we start looking at these conditions of approval. Is there any other questions for staff? Okay. Mr. Preston?
Okay, I have, I have actually two. Is, and I think they're more of a statement than a question, is that Deer Run right now has had several fatalities within the last couple of years, and it's a very, very dangerous, and it's a single signaled property, signaled, it's signaled right there on Highway fifty. There is going to be increased traffic for that particular area due to some of the things that we've approved out off of Arrowhead Drive. There has been increased development over on Morgan Mill and Deer Run area. So we have additional trips in there. This is going to be bringing in quite a few more. My question, and this is, is it law, or what regulates, Stephen, you're saying that it's up to the developer to do the traffic study to determine whether or not that should be signaled. And my question is, my statement is, I think it needs to be signaled. I think that the road needs to be slowed down coming down Highway fifty, but that's indot. So I don't know what kind of things we have in there other than signals. Given the number of people that will be coming in even with this phase is substantial. So I think that that's something that I'd like to consider. The other thing is, is that our chair put out there, number twenty-four, which is another concern of mine, which is that it doesn't appear that there's anything for large trash dumpster areas or enclosure areas. And so I understood that they may have the possibility of using individual trash cans. And I realize that there are garages there, and I realize they're supposed to come out on trash days and so forth. But I do know, I am familiar with a development up in Reno, which is called The Villages, and they have individual trash cans, and the wind blows, and they are everywhere. There is no way to get in, out. I mean, the egress is horrible. So I think that that's something that I would like to have considered, too. So, thank you.
Stephen Potte, for the record. So just to be clear, the condition on the traffic signal has to do with timing, not whether or not the traffic signal will be installed. That is a requirement that it will, that's already been shown with traffic impact studies, is that it will be needed. And actually, they've already installed most of the infrastructure for that traffic signal. They'll just go in, once it's warranted, and finish it out with the mast arms and the actual lights and the controls. So yes, that will be installed. It's just a question of, is it with this phase, or, you know, if another phase is before this one, you know, at what point does it meet that threshold that it needs to be activated and create that relief valve?
But who determines that?
The Manual for Unit Form Traffic Control Devices. It's a national standard.
Commissioner Pazell?
Yeah, and maybe to help Stephen out, you don't ever want to put in a traffic signal before the warrants are met. I mean, it just doesn't function well. It bottles up traffic on US fifty even more. So you really want to hit the peak time, and that's set up through the MUTCD standards. My question was to Heather, and Heather, you may want to refer this to Stacy, the applicant's representative. There's a section under the open space requirement that also requires a certain minimum level of, or certain amount of square footage set aside for recreation, and that includes the landscaping area. But I didn't, I didn't hear any discussion in the application or see anything on the map that indicated any recreation features.
So we did have a condition of approval, I'm sorry, I don't know which number it is, that does require that when the applicant comes forward with their plans, that they provide their common open space plan to demonstrate that all of the bullets under that requirement are being met. So on a broad scale, you know, using paintbrush strokes, yes, they're complying with all of the requirements. Where they're putting their amenities, they'll figure out where that's going at the final, and they'll show that they're meeting at least the minimum requirement of square footage of active recreation.
Okay. Second question was, this is a rezoning application to PUD and a concurrent tentative subdivision map application, which you can do under state law. The question is, shouldn't the tentative map include the merger and then re-subdivision, since we're doing two parcels?
So we are actually, I'm sure that'll be part of their mechanism, but we are actually looking at a PUD, because the PUD in our code allows for all of the application types to kind of be combined into one. So it'll be one process all the way through, and they will come in with their, you know, phased final maps for this, complying with the NRS for subdivisions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crone?
Yeah, this is, the, there's a development, which we've heard at the Planning Commission that wasn't well-received by the Silver Oak community. And it has a very similar, and again, I wasn't here when it was approved, but from what I have told and from what I have seen driving around, this looks very similar. And I'm a little concerned related to the layout. When you start talking about backing out of these spaces and garbage cans out there in the roadway, even if they're the roll ones, now all of a sudden you're backing out onto the sidewalk or onto these streets. I'm just concerned related to the site design and the circulation within the development, and also where does snow removal go? So there's a number of more functions, even though I think they've done a great job, and I like the idea of a PUD out here, I'm just concerned about just some functionality of looking at the site design and what has come to mind. looking at the site design and what has come to mind. Are those, are those homeowners, are those homes over, are those townhouses over off of College Parkway? So can you help me address some of the design standards? Are they similar? Are they different? What makes this more, potentially more successful or less successful than that one? I know it's a pretty broad question.
Sure. I will try and address your broad questions and you let me know if I'm missing anything. And also, the applicant can fill in after we're done to kind of address some of the other questions. So we did meet, in terms of the trash enclosures, we did have that conversation with the applicant early on when they applied for this request. And it is pretty common practice to allow for the totes to be rolled out for a development of this nature. So that's something that's commonly used. And this applicant in particular noted that in some of the other developments that they have, I believe in Northern Nevada, they actually have dedicated like parking zones for their totes so it doesn't conflict with the available parking that's throughout the development. So they do have plans to address that. If we need conditions to make findings to solidify that plan, that's fine. But we do have a condition in there that would require they demonstrate that they're providing adequate space within the garage for both vehicles to meet parking standards and then also for the tote. And then in terms of snow removal, code does require that parking areas plan for a snow storage. It's not something that we typically get into the weeds on with a special use permit. But if there are concerns based on your past experience with other projects in the city and you need to address that through conditions, we can definitely consider that.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. Is it on?
It's on. Just get close.
Good evening, Stacy Huggins for the record, with Wood Rogers representing the applicant in this case.
All right. Let's talk about trash first. Have you, have you talked to waste management at all? Have you talked with them about how they're going to pick up your trash? And where are they going to get their truck and how are they going to put it in there?
I'm going to defer to our engineer to answer that question.
Okay.
We have not coordinated with, sorry, sorry, sorry. Gillian Wilbrecht for the record. We have not coordinated with, with waste management specifically on this project, but we know their standards well. They have a certain, if you're going to use toters, they have a certain amount of curb space that must be dedicated and fit for each toter. And we laid that out to make sure we could meet it and not block driveways, parking stalls, that kind of thing. And then the plan is to have the toters in the garage. And I believe that's one of the conditions of approval, that there's adequate space.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at one of these little spurs where you've got 10 apartments and you've got 10, so you've got 10 garage doors and you've got 20 cars and you've got 25 feet to back in and out and you've got 20 toters that you're going to have to put on the street somewhere. And then the trash company is only going to be able to come in through the main drag and pick up only those toters on the right-hand side. And especially in Phase 1, I don't know how you get them all. And I just, I just, you know, I spent years helping architects and engineers figure out how to make something operate, like a condo. And when you put trash chutes in a condo, it's really cool, except when you forget that they go down to the basement and there's no way to get the trash out of the basement. So this is one of those situations that I'm seeing and I don't think enough care's been given to it, especially if you're going to do a planned project, a planned to phase project, where you don't have the connectivity that you need when you're completely finished.
So I assure you that we put little boxes that show where each tote would go so that every single one had a space and they are not on the spurs, they're in the main roads. And once again, they do not block driveways and they meet waste management standards.
Well, it's the same thing with, with snow removal. How do you get all these little spurs cleared of snow?
And, you know, to be candid, I did not think about snow removal.
Okay. Every one of those little, every one of those little spurs that has 20 cars coming out of it's going to have to be cleared.
I agree. And this will be under homeowners association and I assume, I mean, the owner can speak to the rules or guidelines that they will have for that. But, you know, that'll be part of living in this community, that you're part of the homeowners association. And I have to assume that they will have.
Well, yeah, okay.
I'll also follow up with that, Chair Boarders, if I may. So as, so in terms of a subdivision, the process is they come in for a site improvement permit for the phase in which they're planning to develop and record a map. At the time of site improvement permit, we route out to waste management to get their approval of whatever the waste management plan is. In addition to that, we're looking for code conformity with all of our requirements. And the parking lot requirements in code are where the snow storage requirements are. So that's something that's checked off by staff before we sign off on that permit. So there is, there are checks and balances in terms of those two items that you're concerned with tonight.
I understand that. I just don't see where it's going to go. I don't see how you're going to do it. There's not a snow company, a snow plow company, country in this, a company in this town is going to drive their pickup truck in there and try and back out all the snow that's in it. It's not going to happen.
That's what that undeveloped open areas were.
Okay. Have you, you all read the conditions of approval?
Yes, we have.
Are they acceptable?
They are, including if you wish, adding one to require a vegetation management plan consistent with the same management plan that exists on the plateau development surrounding this site.
Fine, that'd be wonderful. And by the way, I'm not naysaying your project.
No.
I like, I like.
Appreciate the feedback.
I've been telling people that they, we need to do nuds and PUDs and smaller unit developments all along. It's a good way to go. It just, this just seems awful. Tight.
Oh, I was going to say, did you, is it awful?
No, just tight. Commissioner Preston?
I think that, I think that I do still have some concerns in regards to the garbage. The other thing is, is with the snow removal, you can't put it on the methane field, right? You, we're not allowed to store snow, Heather, on the park area, which is an EPA thing.
I believe that that was a joke by whoever stated it.
No, no, but I want to clarify that because there's going to be a bunch of snow. Because that's one of the things that I've had to deal with as a property manager and there's a bunch of it. The other question I have, and this is just kind of like off the wall, but we have one entrance and one exit for all of this? Because if it looks like the stuff that is surrounding it is all going to be single family? The reason I'm kind of looking at this is because I just remembered that we have a project that's up on Ormsby that had one entrance, one exit. They were close together, but the fire department had a problem with that. So, I mean, I'm looking at this going, okay, how is, how is this going to work, especially, you know, in between the buildings, if people are supposed to be in their garage? How does the fire department get in and how do people get out?
Absolutely. It's a great question and I can see how it's missed, but there's actually two points of access. So there's the, the main access and then over by the open space parcel, there's a second one. So this does meet fire management requirements and kind of to elaborate on, because it was the same conversation we had when we were doing plan review. So where we have the required open space on the periphery, like to the east, which is on the top of this, those are arrows pointing down because that's a big grade change. So the applicant made whatever connectivity they could to the roadway and still meet fire access management requirements. Unfortunately, because of the grades between this project and the approved and recorded final map on the other project, there's not really anywhere to add another access point. So, but there are two and it does meet the fire standards.
Commissioner Crone?
Yeah, just, I guess just for general purposes, are these townhouses going to be offered for sale for individual private ownership?
Stacy Huggins for the record, yes, they will be for ownership, townhomes, for sale, private ownership.
Okay. Again, I kind of go back to the Silver Oak development where that was the intent, but it didn't work out that way. And so I think there's, at least within the community, that, that wasn't, you know, and I know we can't condition it because I've already talked to Heather about this, but it just, it's the whole idea from, at least from my perspective, from a community providing opportunities for ownership and first-time home ownership is really, I think, an important aspect. And it is a big part of the master plan. We, the new master plan, we want to provide diversity of housing options, we want to provide opportunities for first-time home buyers. This could certainly do that. I just would hate to see someone sweep in and take eight or 20 or 30 units and buy them for the development and they all rent them out.
I hear you and I appreciate your comment, just as a little bit more information for you. So this project is being developed by a local developer who's done other projects in this community, including the Plateau Single Family Project that surrounds this. So this is a great opportunity for them to bring something new to this market, to this area in particular, that is smaller, that can serve as kind of a first-time home buyer product, that then they could potentially move up, buy up into that single-family detached neighborhood that's directly east of that. There is some, there is some thought process to that, as opposed to just building apartments, which this was originally zoned for, could have potentially been built with up to 400 apartment units on it. You know, this is significantly fewer units when it comes to that. And again, an opportunity for first-time home buyers to buy a townhome with a small yard and a garage and move up eventually.
Well, and, and I do think this is a much better solution with, with the PUD and the open spaces than what was originally there. So I want to, again, I don't want to be necessarily a naysayer, but it does give me concern. You know, the whole idea behind the new master plan that we're hopefully going to get adopted tomorrow, it does have a lot of these ideas of trying to bring in opportunities for first-time home buyers. And the other thing, I think you mentioned in your report, is that it also works on the other end too, where people may want to downsize. And so you have that opportunity to take, open up, single-family homes and for other people to move into while, while they decide that they want to move into or downsize for whatever reason. So, I mean, I really like this, what's being proposed here, much better than what was here originally. But I just, I would, I guess I saw this opportunity also with that other development and it didn't quite work out that way.
Commissioner Peterson?
Hi.
Hi.
So this reminds me of Alouette up at East Fifth Street. You've got garage, garages facing each other. They have rollout bins. They take, they deal with snow removal. You know, it's kind of the same layout. They manage. That place has been around for a long time, you know, so I don't know what their plan, how they, how it all came to fruition, but I mean, they seem to make it work, you know, and it's, this is just a grander scale. But Alouette seems to manage and they're, it's very, very similar layout, opposing garages and things like that. But I went through most of the book. I mean, some of your units are like 1,800 square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, real nice. I could see like if you came out of 3,000 square feet, you know, with a yard, you might want to go to 15, 16, 18 and not have to worry about your yard and go travel the rest of your life. Kind of a great idea, you know? Other than that, I mean, I think the open space is a good idea, like the landscaping, that looks good. You've got kind of visitor parking.
Yep.
You know, that kind of thing. But, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner DeChristopher?
Thank you, I know. Thank you so much. I do concur with the concerns that have been brought up from my fellow commissioners, but I do want to note some of the positives that I saw with this. One, when we did our master plan update, what we did hear from people, because it was a very long process of a listening tour, there are people who need to go from single-family dwellings to townhomes. And there's people who really like the idea of having a community within a community, which a PUD offers. I think some of the distinct differences between what I see here and what I've seen in previous projects being brought forth is a willingness to do a little more beyond than what the code is asking, what the expectation is, going from 30 to 39% in open space, being agreeable to a vegetation plan, a maintenance plan for that. When it comes to totes and snow removal, I spent 12 years in Chicago, I know snow. And the pride of ownership, if these stay as owned units, people like the idea of having their trash taken care of privately, not going out, that's what happens in apartment life. You go out and you put it in a dumpster. They like the idea that they are responsible for it coming to the curb and going back in. And I think for the most part, people who would be going in here are probably big adults and can figure that out. I do hope the snow removal issue of having it brought to that area that's being left as natural vegetation, I hope it was a joke, because I did some research on this. As Heather knows, I was very concerned about the environmental impacts, so I took some time looking at the prior study and looking into other cities who dealt with this. And I didn't see a concern, not that I'm an expert, but I take my role here very seriously. So I just hope those things are considered and we can move forward. I'm going to ask a question that I probably shouldn't, but I will anyhow. Have you determined a price point for these?
I, I, I do not believe we've determined one.
We're a little far out on what costs are going to look like by then, but.
Name, please.
I'm sorry. Ken Hendricks, KDH Builders, Jedward Communities, we are the builder rep on this property and we're also building the single-family housing on the outside of it. And, you know, we, our envision is that we would maybe be at the high threes to mid-fours is the idea. But we, obviously, we're at least a year away from even setting our first stick in the air. So we'll have to see where costs go at that time.
Thank you for answering.
You're welcome.
Plus, plus maintenance fees.
Plus maintenance fees. There you go.
Is, is the Draco Road paving that goes in front of this project, is that part of this project or is that part of the other project?
We built Draco to Highway 50 and paved it just probably about a month ago. And we're now working on the end dot we're waiting for. We had to change our traffic plan for end dot, so I think in about two weeks, we'll be finishing the end dot right away. We'll have an acceleration and a deceleration lane there. And then we'll put all the apparatus in place for the light and then end dot will actually tell us when that light comes on.
No, I'm, I'm speaking of the other, which is now Draco Road, which you have two stub outs that's going to serve the entrance.
Oh, I see. Yeah, the new road, okay.
Not, I, sorry.
It shows on our map as Draco Road.
Yeah, Stacy Huggins for the record, that actually is not going to be an extension of Draco Road. I know the maps show that, but that's a new road, it has a new name. It will be constructed as part of the Phase 1 of this project, which Heather showed on her phasing plan earlier.
Well, that was my question. Is it on, is it in your project or is it in the outside project?
It is, it is part of our project.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my question.
Misunderstood your question.
Let's see. Commissioner Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about the open space. Obviously, it's privately held. Is there access restriction from the outer edge of the property into it? Will it be fenced? And inside the property, will, will there be fences or other access control on it or is it truly just wide open?
It is currently, Stacy Huggins for the record, is not planned to be fenced off.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Commissioner Peterson?
So who's going to manage this? Do you have an onsite managerial team, offsite managerial team, who's going to enforce parking, you know, things like that? I know, I read through most of the book and it, there were some restrictions. And how do you, how are you going to enforce that onsite?
Ken Hendricks for the record, we will actually have a full-blown HOA system here. And so there, there'll be an HOA at a management company that will handle all that. And they'll be handling the snow removal. All the streets will be private inside the, outside the main roadway. Is that, did that answer your question?
It does.
And they'll also be part of the revegetation and the maintenance of the revegetation plan.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Any other discussion? One more, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, and this is more of a, a comment for my fellow commissioners than a question for the applicants. Uh, when I, when you mentioned the price point, I heard some, some noise from the, from the audience. That, that price point, as I understand Carson City's residential real estate market right now is below the median price to buy a Carson, to buy a home in Carson City. You know, the last time I had a mortgage, it was eight hundred bucks a month, uh, you know, I paid like a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for a house. I get that these numbers are shocking, but I also get that in today's market, it strikes me that this is a, not just a viable alternative to renters renting, but a preferred alternative, because we, we have, as Hope likes to say, a compact urban form here, we're not going to build out to the edge of the map, and so housing here will continue to appreciate. I, I know that there's, there's always sticker shock when we talk about new developments here at the commission, and I just wanted to reiterate the point that that, that is an entry, a market entry, uh, housing product, at least as I understand it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Public comment?
I had one, Chair, I had a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, that's okay.
Go ahead.
I kind of blend in back here. Uh, I, I saw that you guys are going to have to, your sewer is going to go to a lift station on Morgan Mill, um, you guys, yeah, I guess you have grade to get down to Morgan Mill to the lift station?
Yeah, and actually, in the single-family, we built all that sewer already into the lift station, and then we, we actually pay a fee to, that we're upgrading that lift station, or the city is going to be upgrading that lift station.
So you'll be upgrading the city lift station then on Morgan Mill?
Well, the city will do that, but we'll be paying into that.
I see.
Yeah.
Got it, and then that was, uh, that lift station, that was engineered for the two forty units that we're, we're looking at now, and then the second phase as well?
I would have to, uh, refer to Stephen on that, but I believe it was.
That's correct.
Thank you, thanks, that was it.
All right. Public comment?
Thank you, Chair, Denny French, Carson City. I had all the considerations and concerns that you had, um, already have mentioned. One of the things that I am wanting to mention, and I didn't get back to Ms. Sullivan about it, was I asked for definitions of types of open space. I'd like to know that that dump is not a historical dump, in which case it could or should be evaluated for hazardous materials, and if it is found to have such, then it wouldn't be a great place to put the snow, because then it would percolate those materials into our waterways, and especially since our water tables are such, that that might be a consideration, but also, if it is a historical dump, then it has some, uh, re, restrictions on its use. So it couldn't be public open space, which I think they need to come up with somewhere on this property, and it could not necessarily even be, uh, the units or the development private space as far as used for recreational, and so, uh, any habitat-type life out there is important, but I also have a real problem, considering the developer gets to do their own traffic considerations. We're already looking at an issue off of North Ridge and into Rup, where I think we're going to have a heck of a lot of issues as far as traffic, and to see this and go, well, you know, this is nice, this is private ownership, I, I'm really appreciative of that and such, but their entrances and exits don't seem like that would really, uh, well, the fire department will make that determination, but I just don't think it's safe, and I really think that that area that's considered, uh, I'd like to know, is it considered public open space, or is it unit and, uh, owners or the development of populations only? And if that's so, that's private, and how can that count for the required percentage of open space that's required in this case, because of their having been able to be a high-density, fit the requirements of having public open space part of it? Because I don't think their sidewalks are going to be considered open space or private. Um, I don't think their streets are not going to be considered open space or public open space, so I just like those things to be considered before you make your vote. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
I'm the one that submitted the paperwork. My name is Jaclyn Sandage, I've been a Carson City resident on Deer Run Road for thirty-three years. There's a couple issues that we have, and there's some neighbors here, and I have other neighbors who couldn't attend the meeting, but there's quite a few neighbors in the Pinion Hills area off of Deer Run and Pinion Hills Road. The notification that went out was only thirteen hundred feet in relation to this development, so it was like forty-four people that got notified, we never got notified. It was quick, I was late with my comments, because I got notified yesterday that this was happening. And the issue for us primarily, and I gave you the two, I've been dealing with the Carson City Public Works, trying to get them to work with us for the excessive speed on Deer Run and Pinion Hills Road for over a year now. I've talked to Lisa Schute numerous times, um, nobody has contacted me, nobody has talked about, um, mitigation, what do we do, how do we do it? The concern now with this development is how many people, we're, we're a thoroughfare now, we have people coming off, we, we have more traffic now than we've ever had in thirty-three years, um, and they're at a high rate of speed. It's not twenty-five, it's fifty, and it's frustrating, because I can't get anybody to work with me from Public Works, and then yesterday we find this out, and we're like, oh my gosh, how much traffic is that going to add? So that's an issue. I spent, uh, twenty-five years in the highway patrol, so I know accidents, I know traffic control, um, you guys have a chokehold coming out on Highway fifty, it's going to be a concern, there's going to be accidents, I'm just telling you that, that's a fact. The trash can, we're in bear country, I have a bear trash can, we have a lot of black bears in our neighborhood, they're walking down the road, they, they're coming, we got them on camera all the time, I had to have Department of Wildlife come out, so that's a concern for your trash issue. But the reason I handed you the second letter is because I'm submitting that issue to Public Works, because I can't get anybody to work with me. But the traffic issue, the safety, the concerns for pedestrian, bicyclist, I watched a girl walking the road with her dog, she had to jump out of the way for a car, probably fifty miles an hour, coming down the road. So, you know, that's a concern, uh, I have two grandkids, high school, we have one high school in Carson City, it's over, it's overburdened now. So I noticed in the notes for the planning commission that this development is just going to use existing resources, existing infrastructure through the city, schools. We've had a lot of developments, the ones by the high school, we've had the ones, you know, I mean, there's a lot of developments going on in Carson. How, how is that going to affect the school system? So those are the things I would ask the planning commission to consider when looking at all of this, um, but primarily for us on the Pinion Hills area, and I, I believe you did have a submittal by, I don't know the gentleman, but he lives in my area, and he nailed it, and I've never spoken to him, but when he said the speeds are fifty, absolutely they are. And, um, I mean, I can get a, I can ask a petition to be done to, to let you folks know that I'm not the only one speaking, I'm actually speaking on probably behalf of ninety percent of the people that live in Pinion Hills. So this development is going to be a huge impact to us, because we're already facing substantial excessive unsafe speeds now, with a lot more traffic. What happens when this development goes in? Because if there's one, and I, I'm going to assume, and I, I don't know what she said, that road, there's a paved road, a small one, that's coming on to Deer Run, that I, I think is going to be used for construction or whatever, is that going to be the, the secondary road that's coming in from behind? Is that going to be coming off onto Deer Run? So people are going to go to Carson, are they going to go to Highway fifty, or they're just going to go down Deer Run at fifty miles an hour past our house?
Mr. Chair, the timer has gone off.
Huh?
Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Good evening, David Spencer, Carson City resident. I put in the input via email regarding the speeds and, uh, regarding road conditions, um, didn't know I was going to have company, uh, here. I'm not going to restate what was already addressed, um, one of my other points was infrastructure support. Deer Run, Laurel, Pinion Hills, Carson River Road, they're, I can't grade them based on what the city, um, training sessions put out, but I can tell, I can say that I would consider them a C-plus at best, um, based on expansion, cracks, et cetera, et cetera. And as was stated, the, uh, amount of traffic has increased dramatically. I've been onsite for, since, uh, December, November of twenty-eleven, retired, um, other than serving with search and rescue and with, uh, regional wildfire, so I, um, kind of do my own, um, primary research, um, through observation. I can't give you stats, um, but I can tell you that the amount of traffic has increased, uh, remarkably, and the, and the speeds, uh, fifty miles an hour is not an exaggeration in a twenty-five zone. And the, there were no, uh, school-age kids that I recall, uh, between artemisia and sedge when we first moved in, and now there are numbers of them. So my point, not specifically to this development, but to work in that area entirely, is, uh, as much as us eastsiders prefer to stiff-arm the city on occasion, um, if we're going to be working in that area, we're going to need to start seeing some additional support come that way. We see a street sweeper once every six months, maybe, um, so that's just my point. Would like to see something done about safety issues and some additional road infrastructure support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? There you go, good again.
I got the hang of it now, how about that?
You're, you're a veteran.
I, I am, and a public speaker of all things, which I never thought I would be. Um, I just want to reiterate about the traffic again, um, I also live on Deer Run Road, and, um, we've been there for about eight years now, and tra, traffic has increased drastically during the time that we've been there, and along with traffic speed. And I can say, I live probably right in the middle between Fairview and fifty, if you're talking about the exits off of the freeway, and I will always take Fairview, because taking fifty, it's a bottleneck, it's backed-up traffic, if anyone has been on that road, especially at rush hour, it's ridiculous. So I can say, more than likely, the residents of these homes are also going to choose that same path. They're going to take the Fairview exit, and they're going to come right down Deer Run Road that we live on, that we're already experiencing all these traffic problems with already. And so, um, it looks like the plan has already gone through, um, what I would hope that you would, um, think about is maybe putting in some requirements, like speed bumps on Deer Run, which would deter people from taking that road, um, to work and back, or however they're going to be using it, and stay on Highway fifty, which is built for traffic. I mean, it needs work, but, um, definitely not a residential street like where we live. Thank you.
Last chance, here he comes.
I got one twenty-one, is that? Hi, my name's Kirk Baron, I'm a resident on Deer Run Road across from Jackie. I'm a relatively newcomer, I moved in when the road from the old bridge to sedge was gravel, so we've seen the increase. Um, I went to the road, they had a res, uh, excuse me, they had a meeting about the road conditions in Carson, Deer Run Road rated really bad, so now the traffic's going to increase. There's things, they had another meeting tonight, Endot's study of Carson City fifty East, one of the pages is crash data with the fatalities on Highway fifty, Deer Run is right there. Also, I don't know if it's been addressed or not, but Granite has a pi, uh, Granite has a pit right by the river, and there's triples and doubles coming out of that daily. So you're compounding the traffic there, so people are going to come out of there, you've got all the traffic on fifty in the morning and the evening, if they're putting another signal in, coming out, if it's Draco Way or whatever, you're going to like, it's going to be blocks of traffic. People who want to go to south into Carson are going to turn and go south on Deer Run Road, coming through the neighborhood. We've been told they won't put in speed bumps, um, they, they put in some divots and made like a rattle, but that didn't seem to help. Um, we've had a couple, one crash where the guy hit a telephone pole, another one, the guy hit the big rock from speeding, um, there's no double line, there's no yellow line except on the curves, so it's, it's a pretty narrow road, um, and to funnel more traffic on there, it's just not going to work, I mean, it's, it's going to be horrible. So that is my main thing, and then I'm curious, um, is HOA going to take care of the snow? Okay, and then what about a school bus? Where's the school bus going to go? Is there a place where the school bus pick up the kids? I mean, that's something, I, my daughter lives in central Carson, she's not on a school bus route, they don't plow her street, so in the winter, it snows, it gets icy, she drives on an icy street. So if there's kids that live up there, are they going to hike all the way down, because Deer Run Road is a school bus road, and they plow it because of that? Are those kids going to hike all the way down to somewhere on Deer Run Road to kick, get the school bus? Is that something that's been thought about?
Thank, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go down the notes that I took, uh, for public comment. So, um, of course, I'll turn it over to Stephen to address the traffic study and, and traffic concerns that were mentioned. Um, so, uh, I'll start with Denny's questions or comments about public open space and the old landfill sites. So the brown area that is shown on the left-hand side is, um, a couple of acres of landfill area that is identified as being existing native vegetation to remain, so there's no disturbance of that area, um, I don't recall who threw out the joke, but there will not be snow storage or any development activity on that property that's identified as native vegetation and common open space. Uh, in terms of public versus private, uh, this is not an active recreation area, that is going to be native vegetation, so we'll, whatever vegetation's out there today, sagebrush, bitter brush, things like that, that's what's going to be out there, it's not going to be a formalized usable area. Uh, where the formalized and usable areas are, are identified within the landscape plan, which is what we're looking at here. So where there's trees and, and green areas, those are the areas that are more formalized, um, and whether or not, uh, the applicant opens this up to the public is really their choice, we don't anticipate that, um, there's going to be a public park here, there's not really room for it, and it's not really something that is identified as a need for, for this community. Uh, so there's no public park or public recreation being proposed with this project. Um, in terms of, uh, bears and trash, I, I can't speak specifically to what Endow gets to deal with, but I do know that when you keep your trash can inside, um, and take it out only for the few hours for waste management to grab it, it's a lot more convenient and a lot, um, or less convenient for bears and more convenient for the homeowner, so, um, that will help to have it behind a locked area. Um, and most HOAs, um, that I'm familiar with have restrictions on how long the trash can be set out, and then the trash can be left out, so I'm sure the applicant can speak to that if there are additional questions, um, and then I will turn it over to Stephen to address traffic.
Thank you, Heather, Stephen, for the rec-
Stephen for the record. Stephen Potte. Um, okay, so, sorry, I'll move this a little closer. Going through, I got a handful of comments here. One was that the developers do their own traffic impact analysis. Um, that's kind of just the nature of the beast that we have right now. We don't have, um, the, the capacity to do traffic impact studies for every development that comes forward. However, um, we do have, uh, a traffic engineer on staff who does, uh, go through every traffic impact study that comes across our desk and, and picks those apart. I think, uh, any of the developers that have worked with us know that we're pretty meticulous with those. I, I don't think I've seen one that hasn't had a laundry list of, of corrections that they have. So, um, school bus stops, that was not contemplated actually in the past, speaking with the school. They prefer not to have a designated location because that can change based on where children are living. So, um, that's a pretty fluid target. Um, yes, there is, uh, a road connection to Deer Run. Um, that's the existing Morgan Mill, uh, that's being extended currently with the existing single-family detached subdivision that's up there. Um, there was a mention in the late material about a speed limit increase. That's the first I've, I've heard of that. I, I don't think that's proposed by the applicant. So, um, if, if that was in the application, I don't, I don't think that's the intent. I don't remember seeing that anywhere. Um, uh, on speeding in general, um, so I will make sure that the, the materials that we received, that that gets given to our transportation department, um, and the sheriff's office. So, um, sheriff's office does enforce the existing speed limit. And then, as was pointed out, there are methods for, um, speed control if it's an issue. Um, I know our transportation department does take that very seriously. They do take fatalities very seriously. I don't envy their job. Um, it's something they think about all the time. So it's, it's not lost on them. They also are, are bound to specific regulations, both state, federal, et cetera, um, that govern the decisions they make. And those are also done with, uh, consultants doing analysis of different, different situations. So I don't know all the details there. Um, I can tell you, we'll give that information to them. With respect to this development impacting that, uh, if speeding is, is a problem, then adding more vehicles, you're going to have more vehicles speeding. Um, it, it would not have the impact of increasing the speed, but you'd have more vehicles doing that speed. Um, on the, the traffic vol- uh, traffic study and the volumes, uh, trip distribution. So, um, the traffic impact study looked at three intersections. There's a Draco in 50, Deer Run in 50, and Morgan Mill in 50. It sounds like a lot of the concern is, uh, going south on, on Deer Run where there's the residences. Um, it's 25 the whole way. Um, and the, the study did not look at any intersections to the south. Um, in the trip distribution, in the traffic impact study, it doesn't show any volume going south. That doesn't mean that they're not anticipating that any vehicles will go down there. It just means it's probably less than 1% is what they're anticipating. Now, when they calculate that, it's based on, um, the surrounding, uh, businesses as well as other sites that are trip generators as well as homes. So if you're developing a, a commercial property, you anticipate that there's other businesses and homes that are going there. If you're developing si- homes like this, you're anticipating they're going to places of work, they're going to, to buy products. Yes, they might go visit their friends, but that's not typically like a, a trip generator. Um, in addition to that, I was just looking at the map. Um, it is prob- probably the closest trip generator going south is if you loop around to the middle school. Um, from the places where the subdivision connects into our main, main roads. Um, if you go south on Deer Run from Morgan Mill, it's roughly six miles to get to the middle school. Uh, if you were good to go from the Draco intersection, it's about 3.6. So a little over half the distance, if you're going that way. So yes, there's congestion on Highway 50. Yes, it probably takes more time to get onto Highway 50, but it's a higher speed. Um, it is about half the distance. So that's a significant reason why the traffic impact study said they're anticipating the, the traffic to go out to Highway 50. We talked about the, the traffic signal. Um, I think that's probably the, the number one thing that, that the project is doing potentially to, to mitigate issues is, is having that relief valve onto Highway 50. And we talked about the timing of that and how that's governed by that national standard. Um, and I, I didn't hear it in any of the public comment tonight, but in the additional, uh, the late material that we received, there was also concerns about the proximity to the river. Um, so additional stormwater runoff as well as, um, stormwater contamination impacting the river and the, the environment down there. So to speak to that, all developments are required to detain, uh, stormwater runoff. So what that means is, is an engineer looks at how much water flows off the site before it's developed and then after it's developed for a specific size of storm. And that was just updated in 2021, so it's been a few years now. But, um, the standard used to be a, a storm that comes back on average every five years, which is smaller. Um, if that got upgraded to a 10-year storm, so that's the standard that this project's going to be held to, is a detaining the, that runoff. And then we also, with that update we had in 2021, there's a requirement for, um, stormwater, water quality mitigation. So they're going to be required to actually treat the stormwater before it leaves the site. And there's, um, dozens of, of different ways to accomplish that, but, um, they are going to have to do that. So I, I think that's all the, uh, the concerns I heard, if, if you have other specific questions for me.
Well, Stephen, I would, I would say that this is not the first time we've heard about Deer Run Road and the speeding down it. And if you're going to, if you're going to tell public safety and the sheriff and everybody else, tell them we're tired of listening about it and we'd like them to do something about it. So just, just pass on our feelings on how we feel about speeding down Deer Run Road and that, that's about all we can do. Commissioner DeChristopher, your number one.
Thank you. Um, and I'm kind of late on this one. Uh, wondering about the timing coming from the, the developer. I didn't actually ask that question during that time. The only reason it came to mind now is I do understand the concerns that have been brought up during public comment. And there is lead time for taking care of some things that this city has dealt with as a whole, roads. Um, and so I'm just curious about when the start and when the end is deter- or you're anticipating for this project?
Sure. Stacy Huggins, for the record. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Hendrix mentioned when he was up here earlier that it's likely that we would start vertical construction summer of '26. Um, so grading would happen before that and the infrastructure for the roads and the utilities would happen a little bit before that, but vertical construction, summer '26. And the timeline to finish it is, is definitely going to be based on demand.
Well, and it's in there that you do have a timeframe, two years for each one. So you'd be in totality, I think you have 10 years for build-out? I'd have to go back and read it.
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
My apologies. 10 years. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, I think, I think I want to say a couple, a couple of things is that currently you guys are already going vertical on the single-family?
That's correct. Ken Hendrix.
Okay. Cause one of the things I want to say more to the public is the fact is, is that in May, on May 28th, we are having our, uh, growth management meeting, which is part of, it, it, it's just before the planning commission meeting. And that's the meeting where we talk about, we actually have this, uh, AJ Fueling, he comes or else he has a representative and tells us about what's going on with the schools and what their capacity is. We have the public works come in and talk about water and sewer. We, um, talk to the parks and this is how they determine how many building permits are issued per year. And I think that that's really important for us to see that. I think it's very important for people to understand that not every project comes before the planning commission. The only thing that we see in the planning commission are this, are the round pegs that don't fit in the square holes. If it's already approved and it's okayed, this, this PUD, I think has been on the books since, gosh, 2000, huh? Yeah, at least five years, that they had approved this whole development. So this actually is a reduction of units on this particular parcel. So those are just the things that I just wanted to make, put on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Stephen, a question for you on the, uh, traffic study and the resulting signal. Conceptually, is it possible, legal, appropriate to ask the applicant to expand that to looking at traffic calming measures, uh, on Deer Run Road?
Uh-uh.
I, I, I'm framing it that way because you've said in, in one of your other responses how overloaded the department was. And I know you are overloaded with a lot of things, so I'm just kind of looking for a workaround to get to some of these concerns and a possible path forward.
Um, I, I would say that that is, um, probably a decision that's within your, your purview to, to decide whether or not you think it's, it's warranted and needed to make the findings.
I, I don't know that that's part of this conversation, this particular project.
I actually will advise against it. Um, Stephen explained that there was a traffic study, which his staff found to be adequate. Is that a true statement? And that that traffic study, which was found to be, to be adequate by the city engineer and his team, did not show trips going south on Deer Run. Did I understand that part correctly? I understand the residents may disagree with that, but, and that doesn't mean there's never a trip, but they did not anticipate trips going in that direction. Therefore, excuse me, therefore, I would not, I don't think there's an excess. If there was a traffic report that showed that the trips were going in that direction, that doesn't mean, independent of this project, we couldn't look at anything. But given all the facts that are in this record, I wouldn't be comfortable with you going there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
The second point, if I may, since my green light's on, uh, Mrs. Sandich brought up the schools and impacts on the schools and Commissioner Preston just alluded to the growth management meeting we'll be having next month and, um, that AJ Fueling will be here. AJ Fueling actually will not be here. And the reason he will not be here is because our school enrollment, each class is reduced in size. So the high school's busting at the seams. But when you look at all the feeder classes, they're smaller and smaller and smaller. And so we're not producing as many kids, even though we have more housing. And I already have AJ's comments for growth management. And so that's why he's not attending. But, um, as the chairman knows, for what, nearly 10 years now, we've been really concerned about the schools and how growth will impact schools and, and so on. And what's happened is this, this land development's not producing a lot of kids. And so I just wanted to put that out there since Mrs. Sandich brought it up.
Thank you. Christopher Rysell?
Yeah, I just wanted to, eh, expand a little bit on my experience and, and what, what Stephen has, has indicated as well. There's not, uh, traffic on Deer Run Road, it's not going from one end, there, there's no attractive, um, commercial or industrial development that is attracting people to traverse from, from the intersection of, of Fifth Street and Edmonds all the way to US 50. It's a residential area for the most part. So it, it typically, when you get a lot of traffic, as, as he indicated, the, there's a trip generator and that's a commercial use or a resident or a, uh, industrial use, it's jobs, or it's a shortcut. Deer Run Road doesn't fit any of those. So what you need to be cognizant of is, is, I think, the majority of the traffic utilizing Deer Run Road and Carson River Road are going to be the residents of that area. And what you need to do is start talking to the people who live out there, as well as, as Stephen says, the enforcement mechanism, um, the sheriff's office, in order to address your concerns with speeders. Thank you. And, and the second thing, pardon me, pardon me, you're, we're done with public comment. The second thing, you can talk to me, you can talk to us after the meeting.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Please.
Um, eh, eh, the other thing, and I want to make this, make sure this gets on the record, my comment about snow storage on the, um, former landfill site was entirely meant to be a joke. Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
I was going to kind of address the public on this. Um, south of Deer Run, you go Carson River Road out to Sierra Vista, down along the river, um, used to be, you know, like Mexican Dam area. That area has grown a lot. Those people need to get out to Highway 50. And I think you're noticing that there's very little southbound, but you're probably looking more northbound. Those people that are Carson River Road, Mexican Dam, and Sierra Vista, they're looking to get to the freeway. And a shortcut would be probably through Deer Run instead of going, um, over by the Eagle Valley Junior High and, and like that. So I mean, a consideration is, like Commissioner Rysell said, it's, it's residents. It's not people trying to get anywhere in a hurry to get across town. Um, you know, I mean, it's a long way around to get from, uh, Highway 50 to like Eagle Valley, Carson River Road. That's a schlep. You know, that's like, it was six miles compared to three miles, I think Steve said. Um, so I think they need to look kind of internally, who lives in the area and who's using that road and who's speeding. But, I mean, you got to look south at Sierra Vista and Mexican Dam area on part of that traffic.
Our original mission here was to approve a PUD and I think we're a little off track now. Let's, let's go ahead. I, I understand the traffic issue, but let's, let's see if we can get this thing solved. Is there any other comments from the commission on this application? Uh, I would like to include, uh, number 32, which says, "Prior to the issuance of a first site improvement permit related to the project, the developer shall provide a vegetation management plan for review and approval by the fire department." Is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Um, I move to recommend approval of PUD dash 2025 dash 0066, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval as contained in the staff report, with the addition of, uh, condition number 32 as identified and writ and wrote and, and read into the record by Chairman Borders.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Where'd you go?
I don't know. It's right here somewhere.
Did you lose the agenda?
Yeah.
Is this your agenda right here?
Yeah, there it is.
There you go.
You did it before I did, but that was a good place to do it. Talk about the growth management. Yeah. What? He's not, he's not going to be here.
Okay, the director's report. First I'll give you the community development report, which of course Mackenzie does a great job with. Excuse me, excuse me. Thank you. Okay, in terms of building, our, our numbers dropped in April. We had 17 housing starts, but that's still actually a big number. We just had huge numbers before. So we added, um, just under $10 million in value.
$10 million in valuation. We're over $100 million in valuation for 2025 permits. So building stays pretty busy. We're at over 300 housing starts, which are not very far into '25. So that's, it's like amazing. We've had years where we're just in the 200. So we'll look, we'll look more closely at that with growth management next month. In terms of new commercial construction, we always like to highlight something. So we highlighted a new aircraft hangar over the airport. You know what you did tonight, so I won't review that. Business license, we had 58 new business licenses issued. The ones we'll highlight are Hobby Lobby. Everyone's been waiting for Hobby Lobby to open, so I guess it's coming soon. It's open, okay. Hot off the presses, it's open. And Hot Potato Pie, I haven't been there yet, at the bowling alley down at Homegrown. So, so yeah, go check it out. Code enforcement's been busy, which isn't great news. We opened 142 cases. But actually, part of the reason we opened so many cases is I have a part-time person who I've had him go through all the state business licenses in Carson City and identify from that list who does not, make sure it's physically in Carson City, and then see who doesn't have a local business license. And if they don't, he opens a case and he'll, he's doing the follow-up on that. So it's, it's kind of artificially high because of that project, those just got entered. We did close 63 cases, issued 107 parking tickets, and we towed two RVs, which the RV towing program's kind of, sort of a newer program. And, and it's actually really making some positive impacts. Upcoming information, tomorrow we have the Board of Supervisors meeting at 5:30, and the board will consider adoption of the master plan. And then we have a liquor hearing, which Heather and I are liquor hearing officers, that's on May 6. On May 7, Heather will be staffing the Historic Resource Commission. And then your next meeting will be May 28. Right now, that meeting's at 5. I'm about to tell you what's on your agenda. If you want to start growth management early at 4, we can. Otherwise, we can just keep it at 5. Upcoming special events are a Mother's Day Craft Fair at the community center on May 3, Cinco de Mayo Festival on May 4, a family fundraiser for Chris Sargent on May 10. And that's over at the new bar at William and Stewart, Saltwater Tavern, and a Mother's Day plant sale at the high school. We also have a Walk Us Home 5K, which will start up Brewery Arts. We have a bike race, which will start at Fuji Park on May 17, May 30, the Reno Tahoe Odyssey Relay Run, and May 31, Capital City Brew Fest. So the reason I include the special events is because our department handles special event permits. So that's part of our report, too. In terms of upcoming items, for next month, you're going to have a special use permit to replace an existing cell tower, and that's over on Flint Drive, which flints over by the landfill. You're going to have a zoning map amendment for land on Lampa Lane. And let's see, what are we doing? We're, oh, we have a little bit of public land in there, and they want to rezone it to multifamilies, specific plan area. You'll have a special use permit for an attached accessory dwelling unit, and that's on Sycamore Glen Drive. You'll have a special use permit for RV boat and, RV, I'm sorry, boat, RV and mini storage units over on Eagle Station Lane. You'll have a special use permit for a Verizon Cow. So that's, that's like a cell tower thing, but it's temporary usually. Did I keep hold? Oh, gotcha. Okay, so that's on Roop. And then we're going to do growth management. So we can talk about if you want to start growth management at 4 that day, and then go into all the other items, or keep it at 5. Also, lastly, I carried my binder up here. This is very big and it's very heavy. It has a lot in here. And the chair and I discussed this, because what we've been giving you is a lot of technical reports, like for the abandonment of rights of way, you got all the title reports. And I'm not certain you need all those reports. And so what the chair and I agreed on is we are not going to provide you with the technical reports, unless there, we feel like it's really important to the findings. Then we'll say, oh, it's really important you read the storm water report, and then we can give it to you. So it'll be kind of on a case-by-case basis. But in general, it just, it's a lot of work to put together these binders. It's a lot of effort for the applicants to make all these copies. And honestly, the technical reports are for our technical staff, the engineers, to review that information, determine its adequacy, and then based on that advise you, as your staff, what they think about those technical reports vis a vis the findings of fact. It's not for you to independently pour through the storm water analysis and decide if you've reached, you know, you can do that, but that, it's really something the technical staff does. Of course, if, it not being in your binder doesn't mean you don't have access to it. If you ever want to look at it, like you're like, hey, how's the storm water going to work? Can I come look at the storm water report? Absolutely, you can. Or if you want us to send it to you or get, print you a copy, we can definitely do that. But I feel like a lot of efforts being put into preparing these binders and a lot of technical information, that's not necessarily something you need to have for every meeting. So I think we'll do that. And if you have any concerns as we go, just let me know. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Because my, you know, my, my work experience, I, I, I love it, and I want to digest those things, but that's not my role anymore. And yeah, I can interpret based on experience and, and looking at the technical documents. But you're absolutely right. It's not information that we as the planning commission need to use. It shouldn't, it, it, it's meant for the technical people. You guys provide us with a staff report that runs through the findings that we as planning commissioners are supposed to review projects by, and you tell us whether or not it's in compliance with, that's what we should be concerned with. My wife will love you for not sending that along, because I still dived through it. But it's a habit I need to break in, in becoming a, a good planning commissioner. Okay. My wife did call you. No. Thank you, Hope.
Commissioner DeChristopher?
Regarding growth management, you had mentioned a 4 o'clock start and then 5 o'clock for meeting. Yeah. My experience through the last two is that we needed more time for growth management. And I'm hoping, because through this process with the master plan update, we've spoken to the public about that, that we'll actually have more people attending and more questions. So my recommendation is either have it on a separate day or flip it.
Do action items at 4 and the growth management at the end?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And if 4 o'clock start, people are okay, we can poll you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I just had some questions on your, okay. I have a question. What is all the dirt grading going on over at?
Go-Nai in Hot Springs?
Oh, that's actually really interesting. I think he's just putting, doing outdoor storage, and he's going to fence it. It's not a building.
So, okay, yeah, because that just seemed to be a big parcel to, that they're doing a lot of grading on. So I was just wondering.
Agreed, agreed. And I signed off on a permanent container there, but now I'm not sure if they're doing the permanent container.
Okay. And the other question I had is, is let's, let's look into the future. And if master plan goes through tomorrow, okay, when will it be finally adopted so that we can start looking at Title 17 again? And then also, I think the one thing that a lot of us that have been here for a long time want to go back to the Title 17 development regs.
Okay, so let's see, May 1, the board may adopt the master plan. I have recommended some changes to the master plan from what you recommended, primarily mapping. I think there are more mapping corrections than anything else. It's nothing where you deliberately requested something. And I think it was an oversight. But anyhow, so it will take, after that, we then of course have growth management at the end of May. I need a little bit of a break. And then we can maybe in July or August, we can start looking at Title 18 and come up with a strategy. And I'll talk to the chair about how to approach that.
Title 17?
17 subdivision regulations? Okay. So she's doubling up on me. Well, I think we have to do 18 before we do 17, but I'll get with the chair.
Maybe we can do 18 and make 17 go away.
17 subdivision regulations are not going away. But, okay. But no, well, I'll talk with the chair, but let's get, let's see what the board does with the master plan first. And then let's get through growth management before we take on another big project. Let's give ourselves a minute.
Commissioner Crone?
One of the things that came up, not to add more to your plate, but I might just throw this out there, is that we are looking at, we've had two special use permits for digital billboards. And I'm thinking that problem is going to only increase as time goes on. So I'm, I'm thinking that maybe we might want to look at how that works. I mean, I, I think staff has done a good job, you know, with trying to take the existing code and trying to apply it. I don't have any, you know, so I'm not trying to cast any aspersions upon staff. I think you've done a good job doing that. But is that what we want to continue to do? Or is that something we may want to be more specific? Because some of our, some of our billboards are near residential areas. They're not in residential areas, but they're near them. And then how do we, if we, do we want to open that up? I don't know.
I think I'll talk to the chair. We can find a meeting where we can agendize this from a policy perspective. And you can provide your input in whether we can look at the code, and you can identify if it's electronic, so it's lit all day, all night, what would be some of the conditions that maybe we build into the ordinance as opposed to having to condition every time. And so we can certainly have some type of work session or something on that.
What happened to the Best Western? Doesn't seem like they're working.
Where is it?
On Washington Street.
Oh, that. I don't know where that's the Best Western.
Yeah.
Okay, there you have it.
They haven't been there for two months.
Well, I guess you picked the day they came back.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Public comment? Wake up. Yep, it's time. This is final public comment. Last chance.
Last chance, last dance, right? Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I, I would like to have, had some time to have response from Ms. Sullivan about my request about what types of things we call open space. There are many different definitions and uses. And I'm still not clear on whether this new development dump area is going to be up, open to public, or if it's going to be closed to residents only. And I'll look forward to that answer later. But the other thing is that this digital science, which you just brought up, to me, need to have a lot more thought into the fact that I'm not just imagining these frequencies of colors or the impacts that they have on nature and the nature of people, and the health issues that come with certain types of, of health responses to flashing colors of certain types. And so those things I think are legitimate concerns, and that we should look into those. And I thought, from what Ms. Sullivan, I sort of pin on her, and I'm sorry, but I do remember a conversation saying, listen, those, those, those billboards are bothering the people in the trailer park. Are you going to go out there and check? And she said, I can't go out and check the wattage on each bulb or the amount of light that they're put off. We just can't do that. We can't be the regulators. We can't be the overseers in that. We just have to take the word for it, or whatever. But the main thing is, I thought we were weaning those out, that they weren't going to be happening. So I was really very unhappy with what I was seeing. Plus, our night skies, our dark sky position in this city is not a statewide thing. It's the city of Carson is dark skies. And we're going to be losing those very quickly. We're losing our view, view sheds all over the place. And to have one that's so enormous and so beautiful, spoiled by a damn sign, excuse my language, I think I said pissed once, and I shouldn't have said that, and I shouldn't have said hell either. But, well, but if you read the minutes from the last one, I think tomorrow sort of filters my stuff for me. And, and, but that's a deal we're, we're going to talk about. But the main thing is, I am disappointed about the, the considerations that we're not making. And, and I really want to, you know, I might bug you to death, literally. But seriously, there's so much you have to consider that maybe they're just not on your radar where I think they should be. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Have a motion to adjourn?